Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rick Rosler. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Deborah Kramer, our Chairman, is away this evening, so I'll be chairing the meeting. And I will ask for your cooperation and forgiveness now as before we get started on this meeting, maybe we can get through it in good order. We'll ask Commissioner Carroll to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Turley, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Carroll?
Here.
Commissioner -- Chairman Kramer is absent, noted. Commissioner Bell is not yet present. Commissioner Garretson?
Present.
Commissioner Jackal?
Here.
Commissioner -- Vice Chair Rosler?
Here.
And Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Bell is expected to be here later.
Good evening again. The Commission's role tonight, we have two public hearings on the agenda, and the Commission sits in what's referred to as a quasi-judicial role. Our responsibility tonight is to judge the projects. We judge them on conformity to the general plan, consistency with our development code and design guidelines, and we do it based on the evidence submitted to us. First, we'll have the applicant or the staff make a presentation. The applicant will give a presentation. Tonight, we have a request for an organized presentation from Vistins for a Livable Community, and we'll call them up. They've asked for additional time, and I've granted that this evening. Subsequent to that, then, it's your turn to participate, and you need to fill out a speaker slip, and they're in the back, out in the hallway. This is your way to communicate with us. We are required to conduct the meeting with decorum, and so there'll be no clapping or cheering. The way you, as I said, the way you communicate with us is through the speaker slip. It's not a political rally. It's not a popularity contest. It's a public hearing. If you are uncomfortable speaking in public, fill out the slip. Tell me you don't want to speak, but you have concerns. I'll read your name and your concern into the record, and you'll participate that way. Okay. Given that, approval of the minutes from our previous meetings. Commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes? If not, Commissioner Garrison?
I would move approval of the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jackal, seconds. If you'd please vote. Ms. Chow, any changes to the agenda? Let the record show that the minutes were approved on a five-to-one vote with Chairman Kramer absent. Okay. Any agenda changes now?
Good evening, Vice Chair Rosler. There are no changes tonight. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is a chance for people to come and speak to the Commission on items not on the agenda. I have four requests to speak in oral communications tonight. So we're going to run the light system with the green, yellow, and red light. You'll have three minutes to discuss your item with the Commission, and then I'll ask you to wrap up. So the first item or the first speaker is Kathleen Avina. Say that right? Come and talk to us.
Good evening. I am here to propose that the City of Vista use existing empty lots to develop park-like sites focused on educating families and children about Vista's natural history, including, but not limited to, local wildlife, native plants, wetlands and waterways, weather, and human history. To summarize, these two sites would be devoted to educating all ages, especially families and children, about the natural history of Vista with its flora, fauna, and human residents from Native American through historic to present-day Vista. An interpretive center would provide hands-on educational activities open to the public year-round. Trails at the 10-acre site would include creek education based on restoration, identification of native and introduced plants, and recognition of local wildlife and birds. Portions of the 10-acre site could include community garden demonstration projects such as disability-adapted keyhole gardens, apartment-appropriate balcony gardens, culturally-specific cooking herb tubs, aquaponics ponds, earthworm cultivation, agroforestry options, and zarrescape. Thank you, Commissioners, for listening to my proposal in brief.
We're good. Thank you very much. Next speaker under oral communication will be Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm alarmed at the sequence of events at the last Planning Commission meeting, specifically the Commission moving to disapprove the Creekside Apartment Project, and then, on the advice of the City Attorney, reversing that course and approving the site plan. It is my opinion that the Commission was misled by the Attorney in stating that the project must be approved with only very limited exceptions. The Commission, in my opinion, can reject any project that is inconsistent with the general plan or design review standards, requiring your judgment in evaluating those projects' adherence to those standards. Nonetheless, the community has expressed development concerns frequently, and they become wary by the constant development push against their will. This is compounded by the Attorney's statement that their concerns don't matter. The least the Commission could do is pass the project in question, if it is highly debated, to the City Council for a decision. At least the community at that point has the option to remove them from office. I realize that Commission's decisions can be appealed to the Council, but ultimately that creates an additional burden on the public. It is of utmost importance that city government be responsive to the local community. Perhaps an apology is in order. Some argue, as the BIA did two weeks ago, that we are in a housing crisis, and Vista has only 2% vacancy. The mantra is, we must build high density, and we must build it now. Could Vista's low vacancy rate be partially attributed to it having the cheapest apartments and housing around? And we want to continue that trend? The cheapest housing around? Sure, housing supply is constrained, and Sacramento often forces our hand, but this is already too dense. Oh, but what about the children? Where are they going to go? They can go to the neighboring cities that don't have the density problem that we have. When they're on par with Vista, then we can have this discussion again. If it is truly impossible to alter the onslaught of high-density development because the general plan or zoning allows it, then those plans need to be reevaluated soon. The Point Loma Nazarene University study the BIA referenced does attribute a large cost to government fees and government-caused time delays. They also point out in that study that Carlsbad and the City of San Diego have the highest regulation-related costs. Although Vista is not specifically listed in the study, Vista's staff and the city in general is frequently praised for their efficiency and how easy they are to work with. I'm asking that you help restore the public trust. Listen to the community. They can make Vista great again.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. The next speaker is Sarah Finley.
Thank you. Cliff kind of stole my thunder. But I was here on that September 6 meeting when we all sat through a very long meeting. I know you guys didn't get out of here until close to 11:00. That meeting left a decidedly bad taste in my mouth. The interruption during a vote to provide misleading information, to me, was absolutely unacceptable, the way that everything happened. And it silenced a lot of people that came here and spent a lot of time to come and give their input, and it's a continuing problem with the city that I think needs to be addressed. This is a public hearing for the citizens of Vista and for the Planning Commission to seek clarification and express their concerns regarding projects that are going to shape our community for decades to come. And these aren't merely pesky formalities that developers and their friends need to show up to to check a box, and that's the way it felt to a lot of people that were here. It was an inevitability. We didn't really have any kind of voice. For all the discussion around the percentage of vacancies, building a live-work community, public transit, and attracting new business, there remains a serious disconnect between the promises that are being made and the realities that the citizens of Vista actually experience. The City has a responsibility to its citizens, new, old, and future, to ensure access to basic services and necessities. And when our schools are filled to the brim and underfunded, and when we're giving up an ambulance instead of buying additional rigs when our population is growing, the answer isn't more unbridled development. I'm not alone when I say that I want to see Vista grow. I'm not anti-development. I want to see it grow and thrive for the long term and for people all over to come and see what I see when I moved here. It's an amazing place, and I want it to become a destination. But there's a right way and there's a wrong way to make that happen, and I think we need to be smart, and we need to ask the questions now, and we need to take our time and do it the right way. So that 20 years from now, we're not wondering, how in the world are we going to fix that intersection? Well, there's too many buildings. We can't tear it up. You know, let's think things through a little bit and make sure that we're putting in more schools. We're putting in more parks. We're giving our kids and the people who live here something to do with their time and taking into consideration who's going to be able to afford some of these market-rate units. They're not the people that work in retail and restaurants that they're putting on the ground floor, and why aren't we doing anything about all of those vacancies in those storefronts? Some of those storefronts have been vacant since I met my husband five years ago, when I first came to Vista, and I'm wondering why there's no penalty, there's no push to clearly adjust the market rates so that we don't have a bunch of empty storefronts and useless businesses that aren't being used and not attracting more businesses. That's pretty much everything. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I did forget to mention, if you, when you approach the DIAS, if you will give us your name and address, we'll get that on the record. Thank you. Next speaker is Daniel Carlin.
Yeah, my name is Dan Carlin. I live at 516 Blackbird. Lived there for 35 years, or 30, no, 37. And I'm concerned about parks. I don't think we're going to stop development, but I'll tell you, before we do, I don't see any new parks being planned by Vista. Before we start developing every square inch, we got to have parks. We got to have these things planned. When we develop another, you know, thousand apartments, hey, and there's no land, they're not making any more land here in Vista. And my neighbor, she's an entrepreneur, man. She'll rent out her backyard for the parties that people used to have at parks, not for my livability, but for hers, you know? Unlicensed businesses. So I know this is a Planning Commission, but I sure would like to see Vista plan some parks. And the Breeze Hill, rumor had it about 30 years ago, or when my daughter was playing softball, about 25, that all that was going to be park, you know, ball fields, swimming pools, and it got traded away in some sort of horse trading. And now, we're getting more apartments. I wonder if those condo owners that complained about those lights 25 years ago would say, "God, those lights sure would be nice when the 81 apartments get put up again." Just saying. Let's start planning now for parks and livable spaces here in Vista. It's not just apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Next speaker is Michael McSweeney.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor for the BIA. I came here a couple of weeks ago and spoke in public comment and spoke about the Point Loma study.
Address, please. Address.
9201 Spectrum Center Boulevard, Suite 110, San Diego.
Thank you.
92123.
Sorry.
It would be great, I think, for you if Mr. Conley would share your email addresses with me, so I can make sure that every one of you gets this. It's an easy read. But to understand the housing crisis, it's not just one thing. It's a multiple of things, and it took us 40 years to get here. I didn't write the study. The economists at Point Loma University did. It's supply and demand. Right now, the supply is constrained. We don't build enough. When strawberries are out of season, it's $5 a quart. When they're in season, they're $1.50. But what Point Loma identifies is not just the cost, it's the cost of the whole process. Time is money. And so when somebody purchases or has an option on a piece of property that's zoned for something, and they bring before you something that meets the zoning requirements, and then you make them go back and redesign it, and what about this? And then, last week, the Chairwoman, you know, made a comment about maybe the developer could pay for the cameras to monitor the river park. Ask yourself the question. Anytime you want to ask a developer, will they pay for it? Imagine you're asking the people that will buy or rent. Are you willing to pay for it? Because the costs are passed on. You can lard up costs on a developer. They'll pay it if the project pencils out. It's the end user who ends up paying. And my friend Cliff was here ahead of me, and I believe he's misinformed. Vista's a wonderful community, and a rising tide lifts all boats. The stuff that's being built is not cheap. It's not low income. It's not low rent. We're trying to make your city a better place to live. So the end of the day, the demographics are what you need to concern yourselves with, because the next five to seven years, those millennials are a larger generation than the baby boomers, and they're going to start, that's the cutting edge of when those folks want to have a house and a place to live to raise their family. And if you think it's bad now, what do you think it's going to be like then? So I ask you, when projects come before you that are reasonable, that meet the zoning, approve them so we can get the supply raised and cap the runaway costs for the consumer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McSweeney. All right. That concludes the speaker slips that I have for oral communications. We'll move on to the public hearing process now. And Mr. Conley, there was one issue that you wanted to discuss with us before we get there.
Yes, Chairman, thank you. I wanted to address some of the speakers' comments tonight about the meeting from the 6th of September on the Creekside Apartments. The staff's been made aware of some misstatements that have occurred in the press and online regarding the Assistant Attorney's statements at the meeting. I've prepared a transcript of what was stated exactly, which has been provided to all the Commissioners, and we'll make it available to the public following the meeting. But basically, it summarizes the Housing Accountability Act, which specifies that if the Planning Commission or Council wants to deny or reduce the density of a project, they have to make specific findings related to an objective health and safety standard. And I'll go through the specifics of that later tonight, but that's exactly what the City Attorney said at the meeting, and there were quotes that he didn't provide you the option that you could reduce the density. That's not, in fact, the case unless you make the same finding. So just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay. Is that a recent change in state law?
This is a state law that was approved many years ago, primarily related to affordable housing.
Okay.
There was a court decision in 2011 at the state level that opined that this law would apply to any housing development, whether affordable or not, and so cities have been bound by that decision since then.
Okay. All right. Very good. Commissioner Jackal has a disclosure that she wants to make this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I, of the two items on tonight's agenda, they are both located in South Vista, and I am a member of the Board of South Vista Communities. I know that South Vista Communities, as an organization, has submitted a communication regarding the first item, and I don't know, I imagine someone will speak for South Vista Communities about the second item, but I want to make clear that I have not been any part of any discussion about either item. I have not received any minutes or reports, and I feel I will be very able to make an objective decision about both items.
Thank you. All right. Having given that, Mr. Conley, can you tell us about PC 14-313, Breeze Hill Apartments?
Thank you, Chairman. This is a request for a site development plan for 88 apartment units on a 3.18 acre site. The property is located at 631 South Melrose Drive at the southwest corner of South Melrose and Breeze Hill Road. The project would include demolition of an existing 21,549-square-foot commercial strip building, which is located on the site. The Commission is familiar with this project as it's been presented for early design review two times, once on September 1st and once on December 15th of last year. The project location is shown here on the overhead. As I noted, an existing strip center and associated parking lot, a little over three acres. The project site does not include the adjacent CVS or Comerica Bank. It's the back commercial strip building only. The property is surrounded by the Charlemont apartment, excuse me, the Charlemont condominiums to the west, the Avalon Apartments and commercial retail to the north, the CVS and Comerica Bank, as well as South Melrose to the east, and Breeze Hill Park and Breeze Hill Elementary to the south. The property is designated mixed-use in the general plan, which allows commercial or residential uses, or either to occur individually on the site for residential densities that allows up to 40 dwelling units per acre. The property is zoned mixed-use at 40 dwelling units per acre, which implements the general plan designation. This designation allows up to four stories with a maximum density of 40 units to the acre. The site development plan is shown here. There are seven three-story apartment buildings proposed, one one-story community building. It includes 169 parking spaces, which includes a combination of both garage and surface parking. Landscaping is provided on approximately 20% of the site, and there are numerous amenities, including a pool, spa, barbecue, seating areas, community room, gymnasium. This is a depiction of the site plan. The red outlined areas show the seven proposed apartment buildings. These would be three-story structures of approximately 40 feet. There are some shaded areas on the two buildings that are near Breeze Hill Road, which are shown along the top of the drawing. Those would be two-story elements of the buildings. Otherwise, the remainder of the structures would be three stories. The blue square toward the middle of the site is the community room, which would provide leasing office space and a gym for the development. And the yellow squares around the exterior on the west and south are the one-story parking garages that would serve the project, and surface parking is located along the south and west edges of the parking, of the project as well, as well as along the eastern limits facing the adjacent commercial development. This is the landscape plan, which is included in your packet. Extensive landscaping along the perimeter of the project and along the street frontage, and 20% of the site is landscaped, as I mentioned before. The elevations for the project propose an Irving Gill-inspired design. The architect is here and will provide a lot more detail about the basics of the architectural design. It's based on fairly simple forms and materials, includes some S-tile roofs, wood elements, stucco facade, balconies, some arched entries, et cetera. These show the elevations along the street frontage, which would be the buildings on the left and right facing Breeze Hill Road. You can note the two-story elevation of the building on the right portion of it. These would be the other three-story buildings within the central portion of the project, similar design. And this is the one-story community room on the left and the proposed parking garages on the right. Site development plan review at the Planning Commission's discretion tonight is to determine if the project conforms to the general plan elements, the zoning, our design review guidelines, including the community's goals established in these documents, any specific conditions levied as a result of prior approvals on this property, and all on and off-site improvements to implement the intent and purpose of the city's codes and standards. That's the exact language from our code with respect to what you're reviewing this evening. I briefly wanted to cover the Housing Accountability Act, which is the issue that was raised two meetings ago and that some speakers addressed tonight. This is a state law, as mentioned, that was approved many years ago relative to affordable housing, but was interpreted to apply to all housing development in 2011. When a proposed housing development complies with the applicable objective general plan and zoning standards and criteria, including the design review standards, in effect at the time the application is deemed complete, the approving body must make the following findings in order to deny the project or reduce its density. One, the project will have a specific adverse impact upon health and safety unless the project is disapproved or reduced to a lower density. Specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions in place at the time the project is deemed complete. And two, there is no feasible method to mitigate that impact other than disapproval or reducing the density of the project. With respect to the general plan, the project complies with a mixed-use land use designation as it allows up to 40 units per acre and allows either residential or commercial uses. It's a multifamily residential use at 28 units to the acre. Conformance of the general plan policies is not something I'm going to get into a lot of detail in the staff presentation. There's an extensive amount of information in the staff report, including in the response to comments with respect to general plan compliance, as well as the MND, but I'm available to answer any questions if you have questions about policy conformance with respect to the general plan. The property is zoned MU40. It's under Development Code, Chapter 1835. There is a table in the staff report that goes through all the zoning standards and evaluates the project's compliance with those standards. As noted in Exhibit 4, some of the units, I think approximately four of the 88 units will be below our minimum size unit standard for a one-bedroom unit, which is 700 square feet. There are four units that would be at 625 feet, and the Planning Commission must approve this exemption from the requirement. With respect to the city's design guidelines, which evaluate architectural and site plan conformance to our general plan, there is an exhibit in the staff report that goes through a detailed analysis of the project's compliance with those standards. There is some question as to the level of detail on all four sides of the building, and so if the Planning Commission would like to see some additional architectural detail on the garage side of the building, that's within your discretion this evening as well. With respect to environmental review, the project went through a mitigated negative declaration, which is an environmental document that evaluates numerous environmental issues. It was circulated for public review in July of this year. Mitigation measures were identified in the document for construction noise impacts, which are included in the conditions. There were 26 comment letters received during the public review period, and staff prepared responses to those letters, which is all included in your staff report. With that, staff supports recommendation of approval for the project, and the applicant is going to have a much more detailed presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Any questions from the Commission to Mr. Conley? Commissioner Garrison?
Just a clarification, Mr. Conley. Because this Just a clarification, Mr. Conley. Because this is mixed use, you can go to 40. But if this, this was residential high density, it would be how many units per acre?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So because this is mixed use, even though it is not being used as mixed use, it's only being used as residential, the 40 units apply. Is that correct?
That's correct. The mixed use designation allows a, it's the highest residential density in the city.
So the second project we'll look at today, and I don't want to get sidetracked on that, but that is zoned residential. And it's twice the acreage but the same number of units basically because it's in a different zone.
That's correct. The zoning in that area relegates it to a lower density than 40 units to the acre. I believe it's 15.
Okay. Second question, somebody brought up parks. This project would generate about $600,000 that could go toward parks. Is that correct? That was in the staff report?
All new development has to pay development impact fees for park impacts. It's based on the size of the project. The number of units dictates a fee. This project would equate to around $620,000. And those fees are deposited into an account that has to be used for new park improvements, not maintenance of existing parks, but new improvements or new parkland.
And one, one final question. The, the bank and the pharmacy are not included in this. But if somebody wanted to, they could basically low, razz those buildings and come back with apartments for those. That's possible.
That is possible. It has not been proposed yet. We are planning on visiting the mixed use zone to discuss that issue in October.
Thank you. Good idea.
Okay. We'll now hear from the applicant, Ian Gill.
Chairman Rustler, members of the commission. It's been a long path here. We've been in this process for nearly two years now. And, you know, it occurred to me that you guys are great public servants. And I'm sure that when you volunteered for this effort, you didn't anticipate you'd be dealing with quite such controversial projects. In our opinion, they obviously shouldn't be. But I want to applaud you for your conscientious application of the work that you do. I, I would like to just start off by telling you, this is our team, Pathfinder with Silvergate. We acquired the whole property, nearly six acres, several years ago. And, you know, from that standpoint, the mixed use zoning appeared appropriate to us. The CVS Pharmacy and the Comerica Bank are part of the overall project that we acquired. And we are only redeveloping the back lot on the project with multifamily. Our architects, Carrier Johnson, landscape architect, LandLab, Latitude 33 is our civil engineer. We actually have Jim Kilgore from Latitude 33 here this evening, as well as Justin Schlafly from Urban Systems who did the independent traffic analysis on the project if any questions should arise on all of that. Today, what I would like to do is really just give you a little bit of history on the property, why we're partially redeveloping it with housing, how it complies with the city requirements, you know, the, the context of the state code, the facts about mixed use parking ratios. You know, what I heard at the Creekside presentation several weeks ago is that there really isn't a good understanding about why the parking ratios should be lower for mixed use. And I hope I can cast some light on that this evening because it is justified. I want to talk about how parking and traffic issues are mitigated by our plan, tell you a little bit about not all of it, but a little bit about our efforts to work with the community. And even though our original plan as it was submitted with 100 units was in compliance with all the standards, very much as the final project at 88 units is, we've made an investment of well over $600,000 so far in the project, which is about $300,000 more than we intended to do to get to this point. We've given up about $4 million with a balance sheet value out of the project in order to try to work with the community and come up with an acceptable program here that included totally changing the architecture and adding more parking than the city required. I want to, we're going to have Vicky Piazza give a quick overview of the current design, show you the significant changes that we've made from the original plan because we've gone through four levels of change since we originally first talked to the city about this plan back in November of 2014. And, you know, finally, what we could have done on the site if we'd chosen not to try to be sensitive to the zoning and try to be sensitive to the community. So, so here is the site plan that shows the existing retail with the, the, the building on the back and the site that we're planning to redevelop. The CVS Pharmacy and Comerica Bank building, to answer your question, Commissioner Garrison, are both on very long-term leases. My guess is they're not going to be demolished or changed anytime soon. I mean, those are, those are, I think from memory, at least 20-year leases. So the shopping center, as you heard, was completed in 2007. The building on the back is 21,000 square feet. There's never been more than 12,000 square feet occupied since completion. And by the end of 2014, only 6,000 square feet were occupied. Several of those tenants left owing significant rent. And contrary to what some people may have heard, we did not increase rents. We did not drive the tenants out. We tried to work with them. When we originally bought the property, we had an open mind about what we were going to do with it. It became apparent very quickly to us that all the retail was not viable. We planned to keep what was, and we planned to substitute what was allowable within the existing zoning. So we're proposing an 88-unit project as it's now designed with the CVS Pharmacy and Comerica Bank to remain. Just to give you a sense of the context here of the environs, you can see Charlemont off to the west of our site. And you can see what was then in a, a construction stage, the Avalon project of 221 units across the street. I show you that because I want to show you the context, the sense of scale between the project that we're proposing and Avalon. And I know that the neighborhood group, we're particularly upset about Avalon. And I think in some respects, that what, that's what caused kind of a visceral reaction about too many apartments being built in Vista. But, you know, really, all that's happening is you have a limited amount of high-density residential land. When it's built out, it's built out. It's pretty obvious there isn't going to be any rezoning being done here in the city. And so some of the comments that Mr. McSweeney made are true. You've got some high schoolers here today. You know, they're not all going to be able to afford to buy homes right away. They need somewhere to live. The, the, the buildings that we do are not double corridor loaded like, like hotel rooms. They have minimum nine-foot ceilings. They are single loaded on the upper floors, which means they have windows on both sides. They feel much more like a home. We try to make that as an inviting and as, as good an environment as we can i- in a rental setting. And why are we building, or why are we planning to build multifamily residential on the back of the property? Because homeownership in San Diego is so unaffordable. Only 70, you know, it's unaffordable for over 70% of households. The county needs to produce nearly 162 housing units from 2010 to 2010, 20, to meet demand. And multifamily development, infill development is mostly where this county is going because of the, the lack of availability of, of green space land. And as you heard from Mike McSweeney, you know, you have a 2.5% to 3% vacancy rate here. There's tremendous demand for good quality rental housing. There is a much higher vacancy rate in retail really throughout Vista and particularly at Breeze Hill where retail was not sustainable. The City of Vista general plan was adopted in 2012. Now, that didn't just happen overnight. We know there are a lot of people who are very upset about what we're proposing to do on both these projects. They all had an opportunity through multiple workshops and notice public hearings to come and provide their input on the plan. You know, if they really didn't like the plan, then, you know, maybe it would not have developed the way it did. And maybe people like us wouldn't have in good faith gone forward to propose projects that were within the guidelines and the rules. Our project embodies the general plan housing element goals. Infill development avoids urban sprawl and reduces car dependence. That's a good thing. And, you know, communities are headed in that direction. We're providing high-quality rental housing and compliance with all the requirements. I mentioned our single-loaded building design, very different than what you see with most apartments. Our project exceeds by over 16 spaces all the parking requirements that are required in the mixed use zone. Our project strengthens demand for the surrounding retail, not only with the CVS and the Comerica, but immediately across the street as well. And we're creating a walkable environment. We've tried to listen to the community. We've incorporated an easier path of access outside of our project to the park next door. So this is how we comply. We're 39 units below the allowable density. We could have done 127 without affordable housing. We're doing 88 in this final version. We're 12 units per acre below the allowable density. We're 16 spaces above the parking requirement. We're 338 square feet above the requirement for open space in our project. We're 24 to 34 feet below the allowable height of 60 feet that's permitted within this zone. And we're only doing two to three stories. We're one to two stories below the allowable height. You already heard about state law. And there's a reason that this state law was passed. It's because when cities adopt general plans and the housing element of those plans, there's supposed to be some certainty in the process for the companies that take the risk to develop projects within those guidelines. We're in a mixed use zone. And as you've heard, we've complied with all the parking requirements. I won't dwell on what those requirements are. The requirement's 153 parking spaces for the mix of units that we have in our project. We're providing 169 spaces. That's 1.9 spaces per unit. Why should there be a lower parking ratio in multifamily in a mixed use zone? The Urban Land Institute, some of you may have heard of, is a nonprofit education and research institute. It's international. It's non-political. It's a universally respected source on all matters related to responsible leadership in the use of land to enhance the total environment. They publish a shared parking manual. It's now in its second edition. One of the opening statements in that manual is that when development with complementary parking patterns are able to use the same parking less is required. Retail obviously uses spaces during the day, typically not much in the evenings. So even if it's only on an informal basis, this project has an ability to share some parking that Avalon and other pure residential projects being built in the multi, being built in the mixed use zone where there is no retail don't have the ability to do. ULI, based on their workshop study, recommends 1.45 spaces per multifamily unit in a mixed use project with an addition of .15 visitor spaces per unit. That would be a total of 1.6 spaces per dwelling unit, 141 total spaces. The city requirement for Breeze Hill is 153 spaces. That's 1.74 per dwelling unit. We're proposing 169 spaces in our current plan. That's 1.92. Vista has amongst the highest parking ratios of any city in San Diego County. And is this really justified? Recent independent study that Walker Parking, who actually participated in this national study for the shared parking manual, indicates that actually the demand here in multifamily rentals is more like 1.5 space actual need per unit in Vista. This is a table which is pretty hard to read from some study that they did of some of the residential projects in Vista back in 2015. It shows that the highest observed demand was 1.87 spaces per unit and the average was 1.5. Since then, that analysis has been updated this year in June. And I'm not showing the complete table here, but actually the average now is more like 1.41. In this table for these projects, it's 1.46 per unit. So, you know, all the hysteria you hear about the need for added parking and we have to have well over two spaces per unit because everybody in a bed has a car, just is not justified by the facts. The next fact on, on traffic, we've heard a lot about how the traffic's unsustainable in the area, how we're only contributing to the traffic. Had this retail building been successful, it would have generated 862 average daily trips. Our 88-unit project is only generating 528. That's a 38-point, 38.7% reduction, a net reduction of 334 trips, significantly less than successful retail would have generated in the area. So we are not contributing to congestion on the surrounding roads. Despite all of this, we have worked, we've done our best to try to work with the community. It was a big shock to us. After initially talking to the city in November 2014 and submitting in January of 2015, we, we got comments from the city. You know, we had a deemed incomplete application because we didn't quite meet the parking requirements. There were a few other things. We went back. We made those changes. We resubmitted. And it was suggested that we have a neighborhood meeting. You know, make it convenient for the neighbors. You know, potentially a few will show up if they're interested. We did not anticipate an angry mob of 60 people showing up for that meeting. It was a real shock to us. You know, where we've done a similar project in La Mesa where we're repurposing the backend of a shopping center, we had strong community support for actually ending vagrancy and providing a positive contribution to the community. So this was a real surprise to us. It really set us back. Our project was the one that really initiated the whole idea. And for that, my apologies, that you're having to suffer through these long meetings now on the, you know, early submittal workshops. We, we went through one of those in December. We, we met with neighbor representatives in January of 2016. We, we took as many of their comments as we could comply with. We made some adjustments in the project that we think improved it significantly, which along with all the comments that you had made in the earlier workshop, we took to heart and attempted to incorporate into a redesign. In, in March, after we resubmitted, we met with the neighbors again. And since then, we've been going through the, the limited environmental review, public circulation and comment period. And, you know, one of the things that was really disheartening to me was at the last meeting where we met with the neighbor representatives in March, I had the strong sense, and they were pretty clear, that, you know, despite all the changes and all the modifications we'd made to the project and the reductions in density, that they still would not support it. And they probably would never support it. So I won't, again, that's more just a graphic depiction of the two-year process we've been through here, which was not something we anticipated when we got into it. I'd like Vicky Piazza now just to cover the architectural changes that we've made and walk you through the current design.
Thank you. Hi, Vicky Piazza with Carrier Johnson. We're the architects. So what we're looking at here is the original 2015 design with 100 units. We were below the density. We were pretty close on meeting the parking. We had one extra space. But when we, we presented the project, the comments that came back were that the units were too close to the street. We'd provided retaining walls along Breeze Hill Road that, let's see if I can get this right. We had head-in parking in this location that people thought were unsafe for the people that were, while cars were driving in and out off of Breeze Hill Road. We created a pedestrian path here within, within the apartment complex that led to the park that seemed to be hidden. And we had created a modern architecture that was deemed to be inappropriate for Vista. And this is the architecture. What we had done was we'd created inverted sloped roofs that we could provide solar panels on. We used a variety of materials including stucco and hardy board, which is a cementitious product that can come in a variety of colors. And we had balconies that had cable railing. And it was, and we took to heart what was said by the community that this was inappropriate for the site. And so we went back and we redesigned the project. In our second version, we reduced that number from 100 units to 91 units. We increased the parking from 150, or we had, we needed 156 spaces, but we provided 165. Some of the things that we did in the project were, sorry, let me go back here, where we moved the buildings 15 feet back off the street. And with that, what happened was we were able to eliminate the retaining walls. The parallel part, we had head-in parking. We replaced that with parallel parking, which actually reduced the number of parking spaces we could have had on the project. What we did was we took those spaces and we moved them around to this area right here where we created tandem spaces. So in some instances, instances, some units will have a covered, covered carport space along with an open car, an open, or an open surface space behind it. We took the, the path that was here and we moved it to the outside of the project so it's more readily available to people in more readily available to people in the community as well as people that live in the complex. And then we changed our architecture from modern to a Santa Barbara Irving Gill-inspired We took the very modern architecture and we replaced it with stucco, which is primarily stucco, which is pretty predominant in this region of architecture. We took this inverted roofs and we converted some of them to clay towel roofs. In other instances, we still have flat roofs, but we're using those for the mechanical equipment to be located up on the roof so that they're hidden from view, very difficult to do with sloped roofs everywhere. And we added in some instances arched openings, articulation to the stucco. We have wood trellises in cases where the upper floor units don't have the benefit of having a stucco enclosure to keep, to provide privacy for the tenants. This was the original design that we had along Breeze Hill, which showed that there was a pretty steep transition between the people on the upper floor, up on the apartments to what was happening down on the street. It was about six feet. And so we took to heart the height differential. And when we pushed the buildings back, it became a much softer transition from the apartments to the street where there are some steps, but it all occurs within the property and not within the public right of way. Our next version, which we submitted in February of 2015, was again to reduce the project from ninety-one units to eighty-eight units. We did that by eliminating three units along the front, along Breeze Hill Road, to create two-story elements, and in one instance to create a standalone unit that was actually a two-story, two-story building with a very large balcony in the front. With this, the parking requirement was reduced to one hundred and fifty-three spaces, but we are providing one hundred and sixty-nine spaces, so well over the minimum amount. One of the concerns that came about from the city was the driveway here located along Breeze Hill. And so what we did was we're providing a gate that will be for fire access only. It will be closed at all times. There will not be any residential access either to or from to mitigate any incidences along Breeze Hill Road. I talked about the two-story elements. And one of the other things that we did was this building that's located here, that's a very long building, was we actually stepped it back five feet so that it was not one long bar. And we actually took that from one of the community meetings, or, I'm sorry, one of the planning commission meetings that we had here. In order to increase the parking along the east side of the property, what we actually did was reduce the pool and open space size by pushing everything to the west in order to get this head-in parking here. We're still well above the average for a landscape and, or for open space. In addition, we added more accent colors so that the doors to the units were different colors, so it'd be easier to identify your unit versus others, and there would be some sense of individuality in the architecture. Did I skip that? Okay, so these are just some very quick snapshots of what the architecture looks like today. This is a typical building. Each building is a little bit different, but in each case, we try to provide some articulation that's, or architecture in a style that was related to the Santa Barbara or Irving Gill style. We've got wrought iron railings, wooden trellises, some arched windows, and again, like we talked about, articulated venting at the top of the building as well as deeper cornices at the top of the roof. This is just a snapshot of looking at how you'll enter the build, or enter the project along Breeze Hill. You'll enter through the project and the entry is flanked by two buildings and you see the clubhouse in the back. This is another view from Breeze Hill, which you've seen before, but just for illustration purposes, we've actually eliminated, for you to see easier, the specimen tree that we have in the front so that you can see where the building actually steps down to two stories and creates a very large open space for potentially the user on the third floor. This is a view of the clubhouse that you'll see from actually inside where it is, there's deep wooden trellises, there is clay towel roofs, and again, in the Spanish Mediterranean style. Oh, sorry. This is the garage. So we went from having a flat roof to clay towel roofs. And then we added, we'll have doors that are of different colors, so that, again, it's similar to the entry doors to the apartment units. And then this is the last view, is the landscape courtyard, which you won't be able to see from the street, but it's turned so that the residents living here will have an opportunity to use the pool, recreational areas, a fire pit, and it all faces towards Breeze Hill Park.
I think, I'm sure you'll recognize some of the changes that we incorporated in the project thanks to your input. And, you know, as I mentioned, through a process that I'm not going to walk you through the whole of, we actually tracked all the changes that we made in the project from the first submittal all the way through. I could walk you through every step of it. I don't think I need to do that, other than to say that really, you know, we, I believe we incorporated all the changes that you wanted to see in the project, including, you know, as you heard, removing the head-in parking spaces on the main access from Breeze Hill Road, which as Vicky said, reduced the number of spaces, made it a bit of a challenge for us, but it was a better outcome. I feel very, very much better about the interface of the project with Breeze Hill Road as a result of your suggestions to set the buildings back further. And I think the ultimate steps we've taken of breaking them up and introducing some two-story volumes have made this a much, a much more appealing project from a street scene standpoint. So we've attempted to do what we could, you know, within the reason of trying to keep the project, the ability to have it be feasible and go forward. We've made as many changes as we can. It does conform to all the standards, as you've heard. We've tried to incorporate as much of the community and planning commission input as we could for changes. I mean, we could have gone in under AB 2222, and I shared this with the neighbors when I met with them. We could have done up to one hundred and forty units under AB 2222. If we'd only done a hundred units with ten percent affordable at eighty percent of the median, we would only have needed to do a hundred and forty spaces. We're now doing a hundred and sixty-nine spaces with eighty-eight units. So, you know, we, we, I thought it would be disingenuous to go back on what we've been trying to do to negotiate our way through this with the community and taking your input. And so what we have in front of you is an eighty-eight unit project. It's significantly different from what we originally anticipated, but we're comfortable moving forward and implementing the best we can with your approval. We're replacing a vacant shopping center with high-quality market rate apartments. We're substantially reducing traffic below the levels that would have been the case if the retail had been filled. We're creating a synergistic use with the retail around us. We're providing significantly more parking than required. And, you know, hopefully the information I've shared with you today about the actual parking demand is not different than we see anywhere else in San Diego County. For some reason, some people feel that Vista's totally different, that multifamily here is totally underparked. I don't think the evidence supports that. Our architecture is now compatible with the surrounding community. We like the contemporary architecture, but we took it to heart and we changed it. We meet all the requirements of the mixed-use zone, and we're providing badly-needed housing for an important segment of the community here in Vista. There are only going to be limited opportunities to provide these kind of projects. I know there's a reaction because in some people's minds, too many of them are happening at once. And so I'm here to request support for the staff recommendation, happy to answer any questions you might have. And, you know, it is distressing to me personally that we've tried to be open and communicative through the whole process here. There are a group of people who've been out raising money, trying to foment a lawsuit against us, and really putting out information that's inaccurate, flat-out inaccurate or incorrect in the public domain and Facebook and other places. It's very disappointing to me. It's more of a mob mentality. It's not what I would have expected in this city. So I apologize for that, but thank you for your attention.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Gill? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner O'Carroll.
Thank you, Jeremy. You had talked a little bit about the mixed use and the shared parking theory. Could you describe the parking on this project that you think is going to be shared with which commercial element to the east?
There is plenty of parking for both the retail projects that are there. Those projects are both with national corporations who will not sign a reciprocal easement for parking, but on an informal basis, when the parking demand is not there for the retail, potentially visitors to our apartment residence in the evenings could use some of that parking.
So which parking are you talking about on the project development?
You can see the parking on the frontage, actually just beyond our site there. That's a better view, yeah. That's applicable to the CVS and the Comerica. That's one of the, that's one of the things that makes this different than pure residential projects that are being built in the mixed-use zone where there is no retail as part of the same site.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jackal.
Thank you for following up on that. I find it kind of disingenuous to try and say that this is a real mixed-use process, project, because you've got a clearly residential area and you've got two retail, commercial elements over here. And the, the idea of mixed use is that the residents and the businesses will be together. And this is clearly not the case. So you're saying that by sharing parking, the people who come to visit the residents or maybe even the residents themselves, if they don't have elsewhere to park, can go share the parking of CVS and the bank?
What I'm saying is that we more than meet all the standards. We have sixteen additional spaces than a standard that's way beyond what I believe the demand shows. We're at one point nine spaces. Demand in Vista appears to be about one point four, one point five spaces. So we have a lot of additional visitor parking within our property. But what I'm saying to you is that informally, what makes our project different is that we acquired the whole property, including the retail. And at least on an informal basis, there is the ability for some overspill parking there in the evenings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Just a couple of comments, not really questions. I came onto the commission kind of halfway through your application process, and so it's been interesting. From the point that I've become familiar with your project, there has been a significant change in the design, in the building design, in the traffic circulation. And you have done a heck of a lot of work to make this work.
Thank you.
I think your traffic circulation is creative, where you're focusing all the traffic closer to Melrose rather than further in to Breeze Hill. I think that's a significant improvement because you're keeping the traffic on the commercial, commercial side of the property. The design modifications and the structure, the setback from Breeze Hill, the minimization of your retaining walls, I think you've done a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gill, thank you very much. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have an organized presentation from Vista's for, Vista's for a livable community. And for the rest of the folks in the audience, if you would listen to what they are saying and you agree with their, their presentation and their points, if you would indicate that at the beginning of your comments and then share some new ideas or new concerns with us, that will help move this process along. We'll start with Val Brown.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I really appreciate the courtesy. Before I begin my formal comments, I would like to address a comment that Mr. Gill made about our group. My background has been in public service, and I know the importance of telling the truth and the importance of facts. And everything that we have done, and every letter that we've written, every communication that we've put out, we have striven or strove, or whatever the word is, we have always tried to make sure that it is factually accurate. And if somebody puts out something that is not, we immediately ask them to take it down if somebody, and they're enthusiasm for participating. So I would just like to have that on the record, that it's not an angry mob. These are people that care passionately about their homes. And that's what this has been about, is about our homes. This was a shopping center that we all used. And regardless of whether or not it was ever full, there are a lot of extenuating circumstances as to why that shopping center didn't make it. And we have a letter from a former tenant in that shopping center that will be read into the record that describes her experience of how that property was managed. So with that, I would like to start my formal comments and good evening and thank you. My name is Val Brown. I live on Job Hill Drive. I'm a homeowner, concerned citizen, and a neighborhood steward. We are here tonight to make sure that our voices are heard and to represent the hundreds of people who have signed petitions, volunteers who have handed out flyers and joined our mailing list, and the more than a thousand community members who have participated in the conversation about this project on social media. Without their support, we could not be here tonight to have our voices heard in front of the planning commission. The item before you is the approval of the Breeze Hill Apartments. And yes, it has been very controversial. It's been a long road. We've attended numerous public meetings. We've met with city officials. We've met with staff. We've met with the developer and the community. We've written letters to you and the city council. We've sent out newsletters to the community, sent untold emails, used Facebook, and have worked to educate scores of community members at Fraser Farms and at the farmer's market about the impact this high-density apartment project and others will have on our community. Throughout the process, we have disagreed with this proposal and the way mixed-use zoning is being used for purely residential development. We strongly disagree with the current proposal from a project design standpoint and how we feel it is in conflict with the general plan. All of these issues have been, we have brought up consistently throughout the process. So again, we are here to outline our concerns. The Breeze Hill Apartments do not meet several land use and community identity policies and the goals of the general plan in the Vista Vision 2030, including community character and identity, density, building height, appearance, and off-site parking. To replace a shopping center with high-density apartments that are three-story tall, that three stories tall does not enhance our community. Throughout this, we have been told that the general plan is guidelines. But when we looked at the general plan and we looked at the land use and community identity policies, they are defined as a strategy, a code of conduct, an approach, or a course for principle of action proposed or adopted by a government. Vista's general plan expresses the community's goals for the future and provides a basis for decision-making for land-used actions. The general plan is an organized set of goals and policies that guide both the distribution of land uses and the way land is developed or redeveloped and used. The basic purpose of the general plan is to define the vision of the city's preferred future and put in place the means of achieving this vision. Put simply, it provides the ground rules that guide development. Each of the general plan elements examines specific issue areas such as land use and community identity, resource conservation and sustainability, or public safety, facilities, and services. Despite this subject division, each element's content and policies partially overlap and support the goals and policies of the other elements. In addition, there are specific themes that link elements. Therefore, the general plan elements must be considered as an integrated document and when applied together, reflect and guide the realization of the community's vision. So both land use, what can go on there... So both land use, what can go on there, and then the general plan, what does that environment look like? In many conversations with staff, they refer to the general plan as guidelines. If the general plan is considered guidelines, why are there policies contained in this document? We've been consistently told by staff that this project meets all zoning requirements and the general plan. This check-the-box development approach does not enhance or build community or ensure that the highest aesthetic is approved, is applied to ensure it contributes to the neighborhood. Instead, we detract, as the Breeze Hill does, retail apartment project does. It's our feeling that with all this high-density building, it's definitely quantity over quality. The general plan should not be treated lightly. The citizens of Vista participated in its creation with the expectation it would be honored by its elected leaders and staff and not dismissed as guidelines when convenient. The state refers to a general plan as the constitution for all future development in a city. That needs to be constantly applied. That doesn't sound like guidelines. And with all due respect, Mr. Gill, and we have met, but contrary to some of the things that he said, we did request the first meeting, and he did graciously oblige. The meeting was, quite frankly, a lot of passionate neighbors that came out because they were going to lose their shopping center. After the first design review meeting, this planning commission suggested that Mr. Gill work with us. He never met with us, and he submitted a second plan, a set of plans before meeting with us after a second suggestion. We actually asked him for a meeting, and once again, he did oblige. And I will give him credit for making those meetings possible. However, in those meetings, we did consistently express our concerns with the project, and they're significant. And during the first meeting with 100 residents, a list of 28 concerns was put forth. And one of the commissioners even noted in the design, second design review, that the answers were unsatisfactory. And while some modifications were made to the project, like a gate to the park, we do appreciate that. Most of our major concerns were not addressed, specifically our request for true mixed-use, lower height overall, and more onsite parking, and architecture that fits in with the surrounding neighborhood. This is still a very modern look in a neighborhood that is definitely more to the Santa Barbara style. And I would venture to say that Avalon really does not count because it's not in keeping with our community. It's very out of scale and oversized. Mr. Gill did note that he has this as cost him on his balance sheet. And I think that when you go into a meeting and that's what's put forward in front of you is that this is costing me money, you're costing me money, and you know, there's other things I could do with this property if I don't get your support. That's rather intimidating and really not the best atmosphere to try and negotiate. So that's what we experienced at our last meeting. Anyway, what we thought that this project was about was creating some neighborhood services. These are things that we used to have access to in our neighborhood, in the shopping center. And we thought that this was about trying to create a better place in our neighborhood. We thought that instead of, you know, doing something would detract and take away from our neighborhood, that we could do something that would actually add to it and perhaps have some real mixed-use. All we're asking for is a level playing field where our concerns carry the same weight as the developers in this process. In a recent meeting, I was told by city staff, the developer has rights, and I submit the citizens of Vista have rights too. We are asking to have our voices heard without prejudgment and based on the merit of our year-and-a-half work to learn how this process works and to protect the community character and quality of life on Breeze Hill. My colleague and neighbor from Charlemont, the condominium project right next door to this, Kate Maxx, will provide details about our concerns to the city's responses and what the general plan says. Thank you for your kind attention.
Use the speaker slip, please.
Are you talking to me?
No, I'm talking to the rest of the folks in the audience. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Kate Maxx, and as Val said, I live in the Breeze Hill neighborhood.
Ms. Maxx, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting to ask people for their address. Could you provide that for us, please?
Oh, okay. I live in the Breeze Hill neighborhood on Breeze Hill Road, 730 Breeze Hill Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm here tonight to voice my, to have my voice heard. In reading the 329-page staff report, many of the city's responses did not address the issues presented by commenters. Where there is a difference of opinion, the staff answers have the flavor of helping the developer. Nowhere in this document have we been able to find where the city acknowledged that we have legitimate concerns about parking, traffic, architecture, density, recreation, the overdevelopment of this small area, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise. I need to skip forward. I thought I had about 10 minutes. And then when I walked in the door tonight, I found out I only have about five. So I'm going to skip some of these slides. It's parking. Okay, I think this is where I wanted to be. Staff responses did not address the issues, and where there is a difference, okay, I already said that. I'm very sorry. Okay. This project further erodes our community character. In this picture, you can see Avalon and how it towers over the shopping center. So that's basically what we're going to have with the new development. There are at least 12 land use and community identity, or Lucy, goals and policies that we think this project does not meet. Yet the staff report, in many instances, states that either the goals and policies do not apply or give an irrelevant answer. The slides that we're going to go through here list only a few of these Lucy policies. We emphasize these just to give you a flavor that these, among others, are not met by the project. In response to our concerns about this being a true smart-growth project in the headway times for the buses, city staff did not answer our questions but offered that there were five other bus stops in the area. This does not answer the question if this location is really set up for true smart growth. So then getting into the first Lucy policy here, 2.2, the architecture is out of place. Landscaping with succulents does not match the existing landscape in the area. Lucy policy 3.1, the project is mixed-use, up to 40 dwelling units per acre, and is adjacent to Charlemont, which is medium-high-density, 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre. How does this project help existing residents enjoy their residential living environment? As the Lucy policy states. Lucy policy 3.4, lack of parking is already a huge issue in this area. Silvergate boasts that they exceed the 153 required parking spaces by providing 169 spaces for 326 residents. This is not adequate. Residential multi-family zoning would require close to 210 spaces. How, where will the guest parking be addressed? Lucy policy 8.2, which of these steps were taken to solve the commercial? That's right. Sorry. Which of these steps were taken to save this commercial building before proposing it to be demolished? And how does the proposal project meet this policy? And the policy is basically about encouraging local businesses. Lastly, Lucy policy 9.3, how is this project compatible with the adjacent condominium homes? The project is not compatible to the surrounding neighborhood. The city's response has been the project would provide a greater density on the site than the existing commercial building. Yes, we do agree with that. This project is not compatible. So here we have a slide that illustrates what we're talking about with community character. Okay, the mixed-use requires smaller setbacks and less landscaping, less parking is required. We have Avalon there on the left, and then the back of it is Charlemont. Architecture. In the past, the developers said the project design was going to be Santa Barbara style. Santa Barbara, as I found out, talking to somebody in the architectural world, is not a style. It's simply a style that is built in Santa Barbara. The best description we could come up with is actually a Mission style. And I have a slide here that shows Mission style on the left. And then we've also seen where the developers refer to the architectural style as Irving Gill design. So you see Irving Gill on the right. And yes, the latest design does look a lot like Irving Gill. I think this is a case of bait and switch. The developer started out a year ago with a very modern, almost space-age design. The planning commission said they didn't like the design, and Ian Gill said that they would look at Santa Barbara or Mission style, whatever you want to call it. But then we got... Oh, well, that's a picture of Charlemont. But then we got this. This is what is being proposed. We agree with comments that have been made that architectural style is a matter of personal opinion. But city policy says that we need to ensure that the site and building design, landscaping, and other amenities reflect neighborhood characteristics. The true Mission style is in keeping with our neighborhood and city. We ask that appropriate architectural modifications be made to use architecture that is compatible with the adjacent residential community. And again, that's what Charlemont looks like, you know, a whole lot different than that. We, I think that kind of looks like a Motel 6, but that's my personal opinion. Street setbacks. This project is too close to Breeze Hill Road. The city's, that was our comment. The city's response was setbacks of 13 to 20 feet are comparable to Avalon at 15 feet and Charlemont at 20 feet. Our response was Lucy policy 2.2 states that the project must ensure that the site and building design, landscaping, and other amenities reflect neighborhood characteristics. Note, the entire Breeze Hill setback should match the 20-foot setback as the adjacent Charlemont condos. Otherwise, you have some going out this far, some going this far. So it's, it should all be the same, which is 20 feet. Okay, landscaping requirements. They should match the neighboring Charlemont condos. This is what we got with Avalon. And I really see a lot of this in the proposed design. There's, I look down there when I'm going to the farmer's market, I don't see any grass. And I didn't see any grass in their design either. If it's there, I didn't see it. There's no place for the dogs to poop. And we'll talk about that later. Density. This project is too dense. The city's response, when we said that, they said the project falls within the mixed-use guidelines. Our response is, this project is not in conformance with Lucy policy 2.5, which says, ensure the multiple-family residential development is designed to enhance the residential character of Vista. Include amenities such as open space, landscaping, and architectural design that contributes to this character and minimizes impacts on adjacent residential development that is of lower density, which would be Charlemont. Avalon Apartments equals 221, plus the Breeze Hill Apartments is 88. That's a total of 309 units. How many people? And then here we have the overview where we can see from this drawing that the building is completely obscured, the view of the park for the public. The project does not provide enough parking. That was one of the things that we said. The city's response is the project meets the mixed-use zoning. The available, availability of on-street parking is not a standard by which this project is evaluated. We say Lucy policy 3.4 requires adequate off-street parking for all residential development. And it's not adequate in our eyes to say, well, we'll let them park in a, somebody else's parking lot. And we're going to talk more about that later, too. Okay. Lack of on-street parking. Here's some, here's some photos of what our street looks like. The top left is apartment residents. Some of them have to park up to a quarter mile away on La Torduga.
Ms. Mackenzie?
Ms. Maxx. M-A-C-K-Z.
Ms. Maxx?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. The yellow light has just come on, and that means you're at 19 minutes of this 20-minute slot that, and now it's just gone red, so...
Can I just wrap it up real quick?
You can summarize, and we still have two more of your speakers, so...
Okay, okay. I will, um, the studies didn't include a cut-through traffic. Here's pictures of trash, the road narrowing, cars parked in front of a hydrant. And then we, we're very concerned about noise during the demolition and construction phases. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Terri Collins. I'm Vista Community advocate. I am the person on Facebook. It's not a mob mentality. We're trying to spread the word to our citizens because at an April 26 city council meeting, the city council said we should have been paying attention. I'm at 1504 Green Oak Road.
Thank you.
So we're paying attention now.
I have to stop for a second and check with the commissioners. We had agreed to five minutes for each one of their four presenters, and that was a 20-minute presentation, and they're at that now, and they're only halfway through. Do we want to let them continue? Are we okay with that? All right.
Okay, I'll be quick.
Five minutes, please.
I'm on, I'm, I will be quick. So just like tonight's meeting wasn't on the city's website on the main page, that's a lack of communication. So I provided that date out to the people who read our Facebook page. So that's what we're really doing. It's not a mob mentality. Okay. So we want to talk today about how, is it this one right here? I'm going to talk about some additional concerns. How overpopulated is this area? The population density of Vista is already larger than our neighboring cities. That includes Carlsbad at 2,897 and Oceanside at 4,105. We have 5,149 people per square mile. The average family size in Vista is 3.8. This is also greater than all other sites in the area. Overcrowding is defined in the, is defined in the general plan. And we want to know how the city and the developer will make sure that this complex is not overcrowded. Will they ensure, how many people will actually be living in these apartments? And we're afraid that the apartments' look will decline if they are overcrowded. The Avalon Apartments add 221 apartments to the neighborhood, and that's averaging, we're figuring about 800 people. These new Breeze Hill Apartments of 88 apartments will add 326 people to the population of the area. With the addition of both of these complexes, hundreds and hundreds of cars now are parking, with Avalon parking in the area, and there is no more street parking. We don't want to be New York City. The density of this area with when Breeze Hill will be built is 27,000. We're Vista. We like being a small town. We, we don't want to be up in the New York city statistics. And a lot of people who have talked to me while I've been standing in front of Fraser Farms raising money for our attorney to speak here tonight, said they do not, they moved here from New York City, and they don't want it to be like New York City. Okay, the density, according to the general plan, City of Vista 2030 land use map, this map shows the density of all the building in Vista. And we just, again, want to say that this area is already at a high density. And this is just not acceptable. And if it's a matter of the general plan being revised, then maybe that's something we need to be looking at. Schools, our schools. We love our, we love our students, and we're glad they're here tonight, and we love our, all of our families. My grandson goes to school at Lake, so we appreciate all the teachers. But what our concern here is that Breeze School here is at capacity. And if you remember, at the city... And if you remember, at the City Council meeting a few weeks ago on 1205 Melrose Way, teachers and parents both came here and spoke to the City Council. I hope that you've tried to attend some of those meetings. They spoke to the City Council regarding that school is full. There's a waiting list. So the students that would live in this complex would not be able to attend that school. He'd be looking out over his window, over the playground of the school, saying, you know, geez, Mom, let's walk me to school. But his mom says, hon, you've got to get up earlier every day because I've got to drive you across town. And what's that going to cause? More traffic. More traffic in our neighborhoods and also longer lines at these other schools across town. Just today, an article came out in the San Diego Business Journal about a new project in the same neighborhood, and it's a Lennar home project. This project is going to be adding 31 new homes. So if we have 3.8 people in a family, that would lead me to believe maybe it's 1.8 kids, and those 1.8 kids times 31 homes means 55 more students will be going to our schools. So we really need to slow down our developments. Again, maybe we need to take a look at our general plan, make some changes until our schools are built, new schools are built, and that would take a bond measure. We know how that works. So we've got to make sure we're doing what we can to protect Vista for future generations. The traffic study conducted for this project does not include the impact of... I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide, but I'll just let it go. The traffic study conducted for this project does not include the impact of cut-through traffic on La Tortuga or Marsofa or Pomelo Drive. These streets had to be traffic calm due to the high level of cut-through traffic since Avalon was built and all the other apartments in the area. Without further traffic study about the effect of this project on cut-through traffic, there is no way to know the impact of this project on the existing community. There is no acknowledgement of this existing problem in the staff's report. Okay, here we are. Parking. There is currently no street parking available in front of the Breeze Hill complex. There's not any parking available on Melrose or Breeze Hill Road. It's narrow. The road is narrow there, and it's painted red. There's not an option to park directly in front of this complex. So moms and their kids and all of their stuff, their soccer equipment, will have to park way up the road down onto La Tortuga, about a quarter of a mile away. I've been driving this every day for the last few weeks to see what it's like, and it's quite scary out there and very dark. And to me, that is an extreme safety issue. And I've also had a lot of comments on my Facebook page, too, of people saying the exact same thing, verifying what I've found. So we come to almost the end. I'm going to skip through. Live, Work, Play. Live, Work, Play is a concept that Vista City Council and staff are touting about all these new developments, and this is not a true mixed-use project. If we take away the shopping center and don't add any shopping or restaurants in its place in a true mixed-use fashion, then the people who live here will not be able to play here, and they will not be able to work here. And then what will happen? They have to leave the area in their cars to go to jobs, just like I do in Soreno Mesa. Takes me an hour to get there. So it's not... There is going to be more traffic. That's the reality of the situation, and that's, I think, why most people are here tonight, because they're concerned about that. I'm going to read just a quick letter that we talked about, and this is from... She sent it to the council members and the mayor. It's from Stephanie, and I'm not sure if to pronounce her last name, Jasek. She was the owner of Poise Beauty Salon. And she said, "My business was located in Breeze Hill Promenade Shopping Center from 2009 to 2014. I wanted to share my experience at the shopping center during that time. I was very excited to find this location. It was a beautiful shopping center close to a major road and surrounded by a park where lots of people go with their families for ballgames and recreation. I applied to lease a space from the leasing agency. When I called them after two months of not hearing anything, they had not even run my credit check yet. From that time I applied to the time I was offered a lease, it took eight months. Other than the location, another reason why I was excited about opening my business in the shopping center was that the leasing company told me that a frozen yogurt store, a dentist, and other businesses were on their way. The center was filling up. Over the next five years, the only businesses that arrived were the Submarina Sandwich Shop, the Post Office, and Bail Bonds Company. A couple of times, we heard rumors that a Red Robin Restaurant was considering the site, and so was an Irish pub. During the time my business was open, there was an Italian restaurant, tax service, sandwich shop, nail salon. They left when their rents were raised. Bail Bonds and the Post Office Stationery Store. Whenever I called the leasing company to find out what was going on with the other stores, they said they had rented, too. I never got a straight answer, or my calls were not returned. Eventually, I negotiated a reduction in my rent because they did not deliver on what they said they would do. What I found very interesting was the fact that there were always people coming to look at the center. I always gave the leasing agent my card and told them they could have their prospective businesses call me if they had any questions. On more than one occasion, I really got excited because I thought with that much interest we were going to have other businesses around ours. When I really started to realize the leasing company had no intention of renting out the surrounding shops was when one of my clients, who was going to open an exercise business to provide spin classes, contacted them about renting a space, and her calls were never returned. It is tragic that such a beautiful shopping center is being torn down because no one ever really tried to rent out the shops. I can say that without a doubt, as I saw how many people expressed interest in locating their businesses there, this was not a failed shopping center. It was a shopping center failed by its owners. The City of Vista should really reconsider whether tearing down an almost-new commercial center to build more apartments on an already congested street is in the best of the health and safety of the community. Parking in the surrounding area is an issue, and these shops would have created a wonderful sense of community for the nearby residents and all of the people who used to park that could not... Who used the park that could not get to our shops easily as the gate to the park and between the park and the shops was gated off. What a shame for Vista. Small businesses would love to locate here. I've loved being in the Breeze Hill Promenade Shopping Center, but with the rents that are being charged without merit, I fear more businesses will continue to leave for other communities, and our residents will continue to spend their money in other cities that can provide these services they need and desire. In closing, I just wanted to talk... Show one more slide. I attended the City Council meeting last week where they showed the traffic management panel, and it was approved. And I just wanted to bring attention to something that's happening in the city, and I know these are professional staff, and I appreciate them. They work very hard for us. But what they're doing now, because our city's growing, and we only have so many roads that are so wide, the city staff now has to restripe the roads to add additional lanes so we can all get out of the city and head onto the 78 off to work. So, for example, on North Melrose Drive, they are going to be restriping that to add an additional lane, which means they will be removing parking. So all the people who park in that area will now have to find an additional place to park. So this is why we are concerned. As more and more of these projects get built very fast, and our roads are not brought up to this level, and there's no new schools built, where are people parking? If we restripe the roads to eliminate parking, what are we going to do in 10 years from now? How will we fix the problem then? We won't have the option of restriping. So please, consider what we have been saying here today. Thank you.
Mr. Jantsch? Mr. Jantsch, we're going on a half hour now, so I'd request that you be brief, if you could, please.
I will do so. Thank you, Mr. Rossler and members of the Commission. My name is Steve Jantsch, and I live at 3205 Beaumont Court here in beautiful Vista. There's been a lot of talk tonight, a lot of issues. Let me go to where I'm at. Some of that is back there. So let me just go through. So where does that really leave us today? We've been up here for a half an hour. This group has been very passionate. They've talked about how it's going to affect our neighborhood. They talked about the conflicts that is perceived in the general plan. They're looking at the mission for some help in this, and we're trying to really get a grasp on what the impact of the development is and how it's going to impact the city in the future. So really, where does it leave us? There's 1,000 people that we've been talking to, communicating with, that are aware of this project and aware of some of the mixed-use issues that are going around town. So in summary, we've identified and articulated conflicts with the general plan, and those have been consistent throughout our process. We're talking about project-specific negative impacts, so it's the density of the project. It's the architecture of the project. It's the parking on-site and the potential for no parking off-site. We're talking about the smart-growth logic. There's no commercial serving next to the neighborhood. There are schools that may not be attended on the other side of town. There's going to be work that is going to be elsewhere in town or outside of the City of Vista. So when you talk about smart-growth logic, how are we meeting those goals? We're seen to be going divergent from those goals. There is a safety concern of the current users on Breeze Hill Road. Some of the pictures show that the parking on both sides, people over their door, people crossing the street. It's really an unsafe situation. And the city responses to comment provided by the public are somewhat misdirected and not actually being addressed by those comments. And I think we'll have another speaker tonight that's going to speak to that. So it is of a concern of how the public is being included in this process. So we did a lot of research. You know, the general plan was approved in 2011. There was an EIR that went through that. And looking at the assumption of the mixed-use land use, the assumption in that document was 65% residential, 35% commercial. That assumption was included in the EIR. The EIR went forward and looked at the impacts from future development, but again, it was a reduction of the residential density. This project, as well as the one across the street and other ones that are pros around town, are looking at 100% residential unit, where the original document talked about 65. If you apply the 65% residential density to this project, it would yield about 57 units. That would be within a two-story. That would be able to provide enough land to put parking. That'd be able to provide enough land for a little more landscaping and amenities. So looking at this and looking at the general plan and the supporting environmental documentation, 65% would be a number that was analyzed and then included in that general plan document, a citywide document. So really, what does the city need? There's been a lot of talking. We need more employment. We need more jobs here in the city. People come to the city. They should work in the city, spend their money in the city. What we see is people are going outside of the City of Vista. We're becoming a residential community, and the people are going to work elsewhere, spending their money elsewhere because there's no commercial support here in town. So beautiful commercial building there, the logic about tearing it down when it can provide neighborhood support. The city lives on sales tax revenue. I mean, that's how we fill our general plan. Getting rid of a commercial development now reduces that potential of sales tax revenue, promoting small business, having new entrepreneurs opening a new shop and bringing more sales tax revenue to the city. Not rental revenue. Sales tax revenue is more important to the city. And again, I've got to say, this is providing the support services for the residential units there. We did talk about state law. What we've articulated to you is conflicts to the general plan. What we've articulated to you is the unsafe conditions. We've articulated to you is that it's not meeting all the provisions of the general plan. So yes, there's a state law. We've read it, but the preamble is a lot about, is it reasonable conditions? Is it the intent of the general plan? Those kind of terms. And I don't know if this project meets that. If it doesn't, then you're clear to address any concerns on this item as you go through your deliberations. The role of the planning commission. I had a lot of text there, but in any event, you know, Mr. Rossler, you explained the role of the commission at the beginning of the meeting very clear. Your role is to analyze, evaluate all the comments, all the facts, the general plan policies, and how that applies to the City of Vista and the whole community as a whole. So you have a tough night to go through. There's more speakers. You're going to talk about a lot of the other issues in the neighborhood. I don't envy you guys, but understand, you have the ability to approve. You also have the authority to deny. And so we've provided you testimony about conflicts with the general plan that could allow you to deny the project. So here's our recommendations. Deny Breeze Hill Apartments. Deny it because it doesn't meet the general plan, and it doesn't conform with the neighborhood of the Breeze Hill area. If that doesn't work, require certification of an EIR. The EIR is the next environmental step. We've articulated there are conflicts with the general plan, and EIR can further address those, get more into the detail, and that becomes then an overriding document. That becomes the next-level environmental review. And if you don't see that, we've included some project-specific conditions that we'd like you to add on to the project so that it does more conform to the property. Mr. Rossler, that's the end of my presentation. If I can just finish with one more thing. You dealt with a very similar issue two weeks ago with the Creekside development, and the public was very clear. It was unsafe. It had a conflict with the commercial development. It had... It was too dense, and it was really, really unsafe and not fit in the area. The only other constant with that development, this one, is the same developer. So we're dealing with the exact same issues of Creekside here at Breeze Hill, and those issues may continue with future developments. But again, we're trying to work with the city, work within their rules. We think that there's plenty of conflicts, and I want to leave that in your lap. Thank you for the extra time. We really appreciate it. Our group really appreciated it. We tried to succinct it, but as you can tell, there are a lot of issues. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And if I can ask one more indulgent as we go through the public review process, and if there are other comments from the applicant, and if we're allowed, we'd like to maybe rebut some of those so that we have a clear record with you. Thank you again for your time. Any questions of the four of us?
Any questions from Mr. Jantsch? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I'm the chair of members of the Commission, Everett Delano. 220 West Grand Avenue.
And three minutes, please.
That's fine. Actually, I had a submittal slip from someone.
Oh, that's correct.
So... But I don't think I'm going to need... Maybe I'll make it four, maybe it talks.
I've still got 17 speaker slips to get through.
Understood. I'm going to go quick. Here we go. 220 West Grand Avenue in Escondido. All right, so I sent a letter... I believe I handed delivered a letter a little bit earlier today. I wanted to just cover a couple of things. I'm going to give you two topics to think about here tonight. One is that you have the authority to deny the project in the mitigated negative declaration. And two is that you should deny the project in the mitigated negative declaration. And you've heard a lot already from the organized presentation, and I'm sure you'll hear a lot more on that second one. So let me start with that first one a little bit, because I know, and certainly there's been some discussion about it already, that you were presented with a project recently, and I saw that portion of the hearing in which there was discussion about the state law on this. You certainly have the authority to deny the project in this circumstance, and here's why. It is both inconsistent with your general plan and your zoning, applicable standards of your general plan and your zoning, and it presents the health and safety issues that allow you to exempt it or reject it on top of that. But let me identify a couple of specific things. There were several general plan requirements that I identified in the comment letter that I submitted on the mitigated negative declaration, and you can certainly review those and see what those are. But let me also show you something else, because even staff tonight acknowledged that this project is inconsistent, at least with regard to four units, with your own development standards in your municipal code, and is actually asking for an exemption of those. So even at that basic level, you have a very specific criteria in the municipal code that this project is asking an exemption for. In and of itself, that's a basis upon which you could deny the project. But let's go to some of specifically what some of the things you're hearing about, and you're certainly going to hear from others tonight, so I won't spend a lot of time on this. But it's interesting, when you think about what this project is really doing. As I think someone has already pointed out, this project is claiming to use the mixed-use criteria when there is absolutely nothing, zero, about this project that is mixed-use. In fact, the applicants who represented themselves didn't say it was mixed-use, just that they have an agreement which they can't share with you, and that they have some commitments which they won't give you, that somehow or another there'll be some other commercial projects next door, maybe wink, nod, hopefully they'll still be there. But there's really nothing truly mixed-use about this project at all, and yet that's exactly how this project is trying to pigeonhole a residential project into this mixed-use area. As the commenter just a moment ago identified, there was a reason for thinking about mixed-use because of its smart-growth properties, because of its ability to allow for a combination of uses, to allow for commercial, office, residential components working together, and thereby reducing the needs for traffic, roofing the parking, reducing the other things. But let me also point out something else about this project. There are some serious other standards about this project that it has some significant problems with. I identified, for example, that park improvements... I identified, for example, that park improvements, while there is going to be a substantial amount of money for a park, there is absolutely no commitment for park improvements anywhere in the project. In addition, it's interesting to note, when you look at the criteria that I identified in my comment letter, almost without exception, as I noted in my letter today, when staff was presented with the true issues of what the real concern was about the project, the staff response was to punt, was to simply say, "You don't need to worry about that, that's not really a criteria, it's something we don't look at, look the other way." And yet, it's very clearly a part of your general plan standards, to look at each one of these specific criteria and note why indeed these matter for this project, and how, in each case, this project doesn't meet those standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julia Davis, followed by Lou Slocum. And Mr. Slocum, if you could come down and sit in an on-deck circle so we can move the process along, that would be helpful.
Hello, I am Julia Davis, and I'll be representing the children who are seeing what is happening.
Address?
Oh, 1777, sorry, 1337 Melrose Way, Vista, California.
Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Vista has a certain character that a large amount of high-density housing would ruin. Children with a yard are healthier in many ways. One is that they can play outside in their safe backyard without direct parent supervision. The children are more active, independent, and have a better imagination than those who don't. While they are outside playing, they are receiving an exponential amount of vitamin D. If you didn't know, vitamin D is a big part of bone growth for children. As most of us know, children should be allowed to be noisy at times. With apartments being so close to each other, sound can travel fairly easily, making neighbors upset. Me, as a 14-year-old girl, isn't safe from pedophile, drug addicts, and many more dangerous people. I want to be able to look 10 years from now and see Vista as a proud, standing city. I do not want to look back on, look back on, I do not want to look back and realize that the wonderful place I grew up in has turned it into a polluted, inner-city, drugged-infested area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slocum, followed by Nikki Hobson. Ms. Hobson, if you could come down, and, very good, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lou Slocum. I live at 740 Breeze Hill Road. I would like to read a letter that was submitted by another Charlemont resident, and if I may, I have copies of it so that it can be entered into the record.
Sure.
Thank you. This is regarding the parking issues that were commented on by some of the remaining businesses in the Breeze Hill area. On Friday, September 16, 2016, I talked to several managers or employers at the businesses at Breeze Hill Plaza. I asked them if they were having any problems with Avalon residents using their parking lot. In every case, I was told they were. I asked them if they would be interested in letting the Vista Planning Commission know about the problem, that there was going to be a meeting on September 20th at 6:00 p.m. about the proposed Breeze Hill Apartments. They all knew about the apartments, and based on their experience with their neighbor, Avalon Apartments, were extremely concerned about parking. Every manager told me that they would have a representative at the meeting. At the Vietnamese restaurant Pho Ever, I spoke to the manager. He said that many times, there were so many cars parked in the lot in the morning that his employees had to use the customer parking area, or the street, meaning Breeze Hill Road. He said he had talked to Avalon management, and they had done nothing to stop it. He thought there was nothing he could do about it. At the restaurant Taiwan On, I spoke to the hostess, who was also a waitress. She told me that the Avalon residents were parking along the back wall of Breeze Hill Plaza, and she would pass on the information to the owner. She also told me that they expected the problem to be worse when they finished building the Breeze Hill Apartments. She wanted to know if all the businesses there had been closed, and said she knew some who had been run out by the new owners. She also told me that cars were being towed on a regular basis from the Breeze Hill Promenade, cars belonging to Avalon residents. At the original Pancake House, I spoke to the manager. He said, yes, it was a real problem for them, and he was having cars towed on a regular basis. They were extremely concerned about more apartments going in, and that it would create more parking problems that were originally caused by the Avalon residents. At O.G.'s, I spoke to the manager. He said, yes, it was a problem. He had seen cars coming into the center, not finding a place to park, circled a couple of times, and then left. He thought they were losing business because of the parking problems caused by Avalon I have another letter as well, but in the interest of time, I have copies of that as well, by another Charlemont resident, and may I enter that into the record as well?
You can submit it to our secretary, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commissions, for your time.
Ms. Hobson, followed by Sue Ellen Shea? Sue, I'm sorry, gee, Sue Ellen Shea? Is Sue Ellen here? Okay, Ms. Hobson, go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening, my name is Nikki Hobson, and I live at 2070 Ridgeline Avenue in Vista, and I represent South Vista Communities. The proposed Breeze Hill Apartments project is inappropriate for this location and is unacceptable for many reasons. It does not adhere to the general plan, and there is already a horrendous traffic and parking problem in this area. We're already living with the impacts of the high-density apartment project located just across the street from the location, the 221-unit Avalon Apartments. Avalon should never have been built, but it was. Even though it does not fit in with the existing neighborhood, the architecture is nondescript at best, it has pushed the parking problem out into the surrounding neighborhoods, it has created unsafe traffic conditions on Breeze Hill Road, and on and on. The bottom line is that if you approve the Breeze Hill project, it's just going to give us a lot more of the same. We have had experience with other developers that is in marked contrast to our experience with this developer. For example, Warmington Homes needed a zone change to build market-rate, for-sale condos, which Vista needs more of. They reached out to the community before submitting their proposal to the city. At our request, they reduced the density and responded graciously to our other concerns. And most recently, another developer, Metro Plan, which is planning to build condos at Sycamore and Green Oak Road, met with us to share their plans and hear our concerns before submitting their project to the city. These developers, I think, are working with the community in the true spirit of building a project that contributes to the quality of life in Vista. So we urge you to examine the Breeze Hill Apartments very closely, and look beyond the just-check-the-boxes approach that some planners have used in the past. Instead, look at what the general plan calls for when approving a project that will affect the quality of life for so many, in our city, for so many years. We're asking that you deny it because it does not meet the requirements of the general plan, or at a very minimum, require a full EIR on this project before approving it. We need to have, in addition to houses, we need more roads, parks, and libraries, and we think Vista has done its fair share to help ease the regional housing crisis. Once this project is built, there's no going back, we're stuck with it for decades, so please reject it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Ellen Shea, show up. All right, John Stack, please, followed by Brian Gildan.
Good evening, my name's John Stack, I live at 702 Pamelo Drive. My wife and I moved here approximately a year ago, predominantly because of the low-density development in the area. So this development and the concerns of the neighbors, I agree with. I used to make my living as a commercial real estate appraiser. As a former general appraiser, I was chartered to determine the highest and best use along legal and financial and physical constraints, redevelopment of this property, to simply convert a poorly marketed strip center does not change its highest and best use, it only simply allows developers to recapitalize in a manner more convenient to them. I evaluated many of these projects. I question the developers' claim of duress in their financials pad sites in front, such as CVS, and their financial equation is generally locked in for the long term. Typically, developers forego in strip centers behind higher rents due to this. Okay? So their developments in this regard, or their arguments in this regard, are not quite, or don't quite track. It's simply not attractively priced in order for them to maintain maximum occupancy. Citing duress during many of the design reductions, for a developer is simply part of the process. Okay, as you know, they come in with max development, a max development request, getting a maximum density, and along the way, they negotiate them down. Typically, in a project such of this size, you know, I've seen significantly more in their costs to get a home run. Okay, more broadly, I'm not against apartments, their owners do not accu, I'm more against their owners. And typically, what happens is their owners don't do a good job managing and controlling occupancy. I believe the other residents in the area have articulated this as well. As an apartment development, the tax base generated for the city, which I hope you do look at, is not in highest and best use format. Okay? Retail is. So in terms of density, from what I can see in the general plan, this is max density, however, this is max density in a small island. So in terms of the general plan, I don't know who came up with it, however, it's surprising to see max density when in fact, the larger area isn't in fact that. So going back to highest and best use, I believe that the city and its residents will ultimately be placed at a disadvantage if you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Gildan, followed by Dennis Bergen.
Good evening, I'm Brian Gildan, 1179 La Tortuga.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service to our community. I'm opposed to this project, but it's bottom line. As a resident here, we are constantly dealing with the traffic, the parking, the trash, the crime issues, everything that you've heard before. I also firmly believe that this is not in line with the general plan, your guide, one of your main documents that guide you in your decisions, for all the reasons stated before. Furthermore, as I had stated previously, I hope that each of you has visited this area personally. This is a problem that you can't figure out based on looking at a street map or looking at a couple of pictures in a presentation. I really, really encourage you to go out there if you haven't already for this. It's impossible to get the essence of this issue. But I will tell you, as homeowners, as taxpayers, as local residents, we are personally impacted by this issue, this density issue, every single day. We live here. We live here. I'm glad that Commissioner Jackal and Mr. Gill had brought up the term disingenuous. And I'm just reminded from about a, from that very first presentation that we had with the developer last summer, and they flashed up some pictures of what the, the actual pictures of what the project was going to look like from the street, but they'd actually airbrushed all of the cars that are constantly out there on both sides of the street, they airbrushed them out. And somebody made a comment from there, like, well, what about the cars? And all we got from Mr. Gill was a little bit of a sheepish smile on that one, which really told everything. So you want to talk about disingenuous, that's disingenuous at best, and it's outright dishonest and misleading at worst. And I guess my question is, is what else are they misleading us about? I'm a retired Marine Corps officer, and I'm currently a business owner, I'm an ethical business owner, and I think I know something about ethics after serving my country as a helicopter pilot over 20 years in peacetime and war. I understand that business is about profit. I'm trying to do that myself. If you're not into it for profit, then all you have is a hobby that's bleeding cash out of your pocket. So, but we understand that business is accountable to shareholders, it's accountable to investors, and I have a problem with making money. Government, on the other hand, what you all doing is about service, and it's accountable to the property owners and the taxpayers. Okay? With all things being equal, the time needs to go to the taxpayer and the property owners. Okay? We talked about the density already, if you believe those numbers, again, for 27,000, that's in line with New York City, and that came, I just wanted to note that that came directly out of the 2010 census report. Okay? I will tell you that I personally talked about density issues in this area 2003, before these apartments were even built, just due to the neighborhoods up on the top of the hill, the other apartments on the other side. Last thing before I go, and I thank you for your time. I know we have press here all the time, and I know it's a small paper, but that doesn't mean that you're not a serious journalist. I'd like to, I'd really like to know a little bit more about the nature of the relationship between Silvergate and the city of Vista. It just seems like it's very, very cozy, it's popping up there, as evidenced by some of the staff responses. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bergen, followed by Kate Max? Mac?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dennis Bergen, I live at 1134 Casa Benita Way. The density of this project is just, you know, it may conform to your multi-use category, but it really isn't right for that area. It's just too many places, too many units for that small an area. Also, last week in the paper, they mentioned the fact that the city council approved $485,000 for restriping projects to try to relieve the traffic congestion. Now, part of that restriping is going to be just, let's see, over here on Melrose, just past courthouse, northbound, it's going to go from Vista Way to Bovier. And I guess they feel that adding two more lanes each, or one more lane each direction is going to help the traffic flow. All that's going to do is push the bottleneck north. You are not going to relieve the traffic flow in that area at all. And I think the traffic mitigation plan that was originally presented probably a year ago doesn't address that at all. At any rate, I'm just not in favor of this project, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to speak on this project, right?
I'm against the project, the apartment.
Okay, come speak. You didn't indicate which project on here, so I wanted to check that.
I'm against the project, I'm a single woman.
No, 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 come to the mic, give me your name and address, and then address the commission.
I'm Carmen Orosi, I live in 722 Magallanes Terrace since 1998.
Very good.
I'm a business owner. I did, I tried to apply in that business shopping center to open a barber shop, and I never got any answer. I knew it in 2007 that something was going to be built in there. And I got two kids. I tried to apply in preschool school for my kids to go to school there. It was, every classroom, it was crowded. I believe in education. Education will bring good citizens. And I ended, I sent my kids to Catholic school, San Francisco. Both of my kids did 11 years in San Francisco. And now they're in a challenging, a challenging school in Oceanside. So the problem about being crowded in that school hasn't stopped. It will never stop. They're trying to build those apartments. I like the architects, where they, where they build the new, what is it? They got a compliment by Don that they did a very good job in those parkings. Yeah, they know what they, they know the job, right? But the fact is, this is a fact. Everybody in those apartments is going to end in parking, in CVS, the bank, and on the street. So I'm totally against for those apartments. Don't work in Vista. We, all of a sudden, we have a bunch of investors coming to build in Vista. I live in a half-acre home. They try to build, what is it? In two acres, they tried to build 55 apartments. Before that, they, they wanted to build 75, though they downsized to 55. So these investors are trying to ruin Vista. And I would like to see more schools, more quality parks for the kids and for the seniors. Whoever pays, I guess, 60 years old, 60 years, they don't care about education anymore. But the ones that have little children, those are the ones that worry about the education. Vista has not, has very crowded classrooms. No quality for their education.
Thank you very much.
I'm against 100%.
Thank you. Rebecca Seltman. Followed by Eve Bombach.
I'm really excited to talk because I have to get home to my baby. And this is the first time I've left her in the evening. That's how passionate I am about this. My name's Rebecca Seltman. I live at 1084 La Tortuga Drive. I'm six houses in on that street, and people park in front of my house because it is the overflow of the parking on Breeze Hill, and it goes into La Tortuga in front of my house and in my community. That's just going to get worse when there's more apartments that have no street parking. You asked us if, you wanted us to say if we agree with the visions for the livable community?
Yes.
I do agree. I'll try to only add things that weren't spoken about.
Thank you.
So I'm definitely against this project. And really, there's only one positive that has come out of tonight is from, if it hopefully doesn't go through, but if it does, is that I appreciate the closing of that west entrance for safety. That was a big concern of mine, so I appreciate that. And then back to the negatives. So other residents have become completely disillusioned and have lost hope that we can actually fight this project and have not come this evening. This is the third time, obviously, that we've done this meeting. So I'm not disillusioned. I have not lost hope. I believe that we can disapprove this project. And I would like to suggest that they put a Trader Joe's in this part, in this place because we need a Trader Joe's. Thank you, thank you. One of the other residents one time said, "We need a supermarket." And I thought, Trader Joe's, yes, okay. So I encourage that, to do that when we, when you lose. And we need to deal with the issue of the loophole with mixed-use zoning. If you're going to build a residential community, even though it's mixed-use, it should have the residential requirements, period, the end. And the, once these residents are parking all up in CVS and Comerica, they're likely going to retract that benefit because of all, you can, other person said about the other commercial area that the parking, people were parking in there that shouldn't be. So I don't think you can count on that because almost no other commercial area has let people park in there as visitors. So I think that's everything. I don't think he's really worked with us as a community, and I completely disapprove, and I hope you do, too. Thanks. Off to my baby. Bye.
Thank you. Eve? Followed by Megan Sullivan. Okay, very good. Thank you.
1520 Melrose Way. 1520 Melrose Way.
Thank you.
Okay. I agree with everybody against this project. I was going to come up here just screaming my head off, but I decided not to because they already did it for me. Comment I had about the 88 part, people living in, for the apartments, okay, so they have space for, what, one car each? People have two cars. So they, where are they going to park their other? People living, usually a husband, wife, whatever, there's two cars. Where are they going to put the secondary car? They never mentioned that. Okay, he added extra 16 spaces. That's not even going to make it for, I mean, that's ridiculous. Okay. He wanted to reroute everybody to go on, to go coming from Melrose Drive. And, okay, during busy hours? I don't know if you've ever been on Melrose Drive during busy hours? It's bumper to bumper. It's all the way from, you know, where the, the main street is, all the way down to where the, the school, the school, what? I'm all nervous, I can't. Rancho Bruna Vista. It's bumper to bumper. And, okay, so here we got a street sign, a traffic light, and here we got cars waiting to get on, and it's bumper to bumper. You're lucky to get one car during a full traffic signal. One car. You're lucky to get one car. I am not kidding. I've been here for 40 years. I know this. And this is before they had that other apartment complex Avalon in. He knows what I'm talking about. Okay, all right, so that's my biggest issue. I mean, it's crazy. It's common sense. This is not going to work. And people are going to, okay, if this does, they're going to go, like I do, I'm going to go, I'm not going to go on Melrose Drive. I'm going to go on the back streets. And I'm already getting so many cars. It's like a freeway now. When I first moved here, there was like, you're lucky to see three cars a day. Now I'm getting three cars a minute and more. And the safety issue here is, my son-in-law was hit by one of these cars, and now he has back surgery. They have to replace several vertebraes. And, because they're just, they're zooming. It's a freeway. They're going really fast, they're late, whatever. They're not going 25 miles an hour. They're going 40. And the guy that hit him was going, was clocked at 55 by the police. And with the skid marks. The other thing is, is my mailbox got hit by a police car at a different time. And it was an Armadillo, and he smashed it to pieces. And the other thing is...
Could you wrap up, please?
Yeah. It's just not safe. And a lot of people are, I've got a lot of theft going on. My neighbor next to me's got a lot of theft. People are coming and just stealing our stuff. There's no sidewalks, and there's no speed bumps. And this is a very big safety issue just before all this. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad I don't have to yell at anyone.
Megan? Followed by Jimmy Jensen? Okay?
My name is Megan Sullivan. My office is at 400 South Melrose Drive. I've been in that office for 11 years. I live about two miles down the road off of Cannon. And up until about six months ago, I had a great commute. It was seven minutes door to door. About six months ago, things started changing. Now it takes at least 15 minutes. On occasion, it's taken me 20 minutes to get to work, to drive those two miles. A number of my patients complain that they don't want appointments with me after 2:00 because the traffic is so bad. Several of my elderly neighbors in Ocean Hills have told me that they used to go down for an early dinner at El Pollo Loco. They don't do that anymore because they claim it takes a half an hour to get from Ocean Hills off of Cannon to El Pollo Loco. I can only attribute it to the traffic from, I guess it's called the Avalon Apartments. I wasn't really opposed to this project till I got here tonight and heard all the concerns and realized that most definitely this is, this traffic is a problem. With these new apartments, it's going to be more of a problem. And I don't really see how you're going to address this traffic. It'll only get worse, and it is impacting us small business owners. So I hope you will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Jensen. Followed by Tom Fleming. And then Rick Trapanini.
My name is Jimmy Jensen. I live at 674 Bauer Place. So I live right around the corner from CVS. And I'm really up here, I understand that this probably is going to go through, but I'm up here to make a personal appeal to the company that's putting these apartments in. So I moved here from Encinitas to live in a more rural area. So Vista has a very rural feel to it, particularly where I live. I'm back up to an orchard. And I am raising a child, and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son. And we regularly walk from my house around the corner to Breeze Hill Park. Since the Avalon Apartments have come in there, it's actually too dangerous today to walk my two-year-old around there because of the people that are coming there from Avalon and have dogs. And there's been a definite change in the populace in this area. So I'm asking you, don't put these apartments in here. You know, I am in the process of actually remodeling my bathroom, my kitchen. And if you put these apartments in here, if you guys approve it, I'm going to sell my house and I'm going to move back to Encinitas. And this is, means a lot to me, you know? And I really applaud everybody in here for the restraint that they've shown tonight. This really is a travesty that you guys would put more apartments in this area. It's too dangerous as it is today. I lived in New York for two years, and at this point, we're at a point where we're almost double parked. I live around two streets, and there's people parking on my street at this point. I paid $600,000 for my house. I don't think that the apartments are going to raise the property values in this area. So I think it's your responsibility to disapprove of this. So it's just a personal, I'm making a personal appeal to you, sir. You know, I actually am a systems engineer for Hewlett-Packard Enterprise. I'm a master of spin. What I do is make bugs look like benefits to customers. And you can put as much lipstick on this pig as you want. It's still a pig. So, thank you.
Mr. Fleming. And Rick? Is Rick still here? Okay. Tom?
Hi. My name's Tom Fleming. I live at Grapevine Road in Vista, California. For the last 40 years, I've lived there. I know each of you almost personally, or well, I do know each of you personally. And I believe that you are all, have a love for Vista that is unquestionable. The question is, the emotions that you've heard tonight are not something really you can make a judgment about. What you're going to have to make a judgment about is what the reality is. And I believe that you have found, you have seen tonight, reality presented to you in ways that you, I believe you can find grounds to deny this. This is a project that would be much better as a retail, which would be supportive of the Charlemagne, Avalon, all the people around it. And I just believe that's best. I stand in opposition to this, and I encourage each of you to try to find the ground to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. William Steffson?
Good evening. Fear, I come with a different voice tonight. I come representing the United Methodist Church of Vista. I'm the chair of trustees, which makes me the president of the corporation that exists as that church. And we're located at 490 South Melrose, catty corner across from this project. What's become clear to me tonight as I sit and I listen to people talk is that the city of Vista has some issues. Some that I wasn't aware of. I know about the traffic on Melrose. I know about parking problems. I also know that it's really hard to find a place to rent in Vista because I'm a renter. I rent an apartment. I have three children. I raise an apartment. And I feel very safe doing so. The United Methodist Church of Vista is not a taxpayer, but we are the, one of the largest nonprofit funders in North County. This past June, we held our annual funding cycle beginning, and I found something amazing. One of the other problems we have is not just homelessness, but interrupting the cycle of homelessness. Operation Hope, which I believe most of you guys are familiar with. If not, check it out. It's over in North Vista, is operating year-round now. And what Operation Hope does is it interrupts that cycle by allowing people to live there, get back on their feet, and then find somewhere to rent. Most of those people who are coming out of hard times don't have somewhere to go immediately and buy a house or rent a house, especially when the apartment vacancy and housing rental is at a 2.46% vacancy rate right now. That means that there's just nowhere to rent in San Diego County. That number comes from the San Diego Union or Tribune article last week that came out. So people simply can't afford to live when they fall on hard times. So tonight, I come and I share with you that we are in favor of this project in the sense that it adds more housing, more apartments in the San Diego County area. It brings supply and demand, simple math. The more apartments there are, the less rent there will be. If the vacancy rate goes up, you can't charge as much. And thus, rent becomes more affordable for people. So we come, we support, and we look forward to the opportunity that exists in providing more affordable housing for people in this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Brett Schwanbeck? Did I say that right?
No.
No?
Brett Schonsenbach from the Vista Chamber of Commerce. 127 Main Street, downtown Vista, also a 40-year resident. I'm coming here today on behalf of the board of directors to encourage you to support the project today. When a developer, a property owner, considers investing in our community, they really have one resource available to them to find out if their proposed project is a good fit. They go to the professionals at the city who deal with the general plan, the codes, the zoning, the specific plans, et cetera, et cetera. And they talk to them, and they vet out their project to see if it's a good fit. You've heard from city staff tonight that this meets all the guidelines that are there for design guidelines, all the codes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It meets them all. That's the only resource that a developer has when they're proposing a project. It's not really right to say, "It's okay to come buy a piece of property in our community that's zoned a certain way, but you can't build it like that if the people around you don't like it." That's not really fair to an owner of a piece of property in our community. So we'd like to encourage you to support the project. One of my board members actually owned the Submarina that was in that strip center. He owned it for over five years, and it struggled the entire time. He said this morning at our board meeting that that strip center was never more than 30% full. And when the new owners came in, these gentlemen here, they actually lowered everybody's rents and tried to work with them to get them solvent and successful, but it was just a failed center. It was a failed retail center. And so now they're looking at some other option, which is still within the guidelines of what's applicable for their site. So we encourage you to put this forward. I'm also the parent of young adult children who are trying to get that first home out of my house. I'd like to help them get out. And it's hard. The supply and demand is brutal out there. There needs to be more supply to bring the prices down, as was just said just a moment ago. And then just lastly, if Trader Joe's is on the menu, we'll take it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the speaker slips that I have. There are two more slips. One from Rebecca Seltmanel. She lives at 1084 La Tuga Drive, and she is opposed to the project. And then we received a letter from Teresa Fries at 740 Breeze Hill. And then we received a letter from Teresa Fries at 740 Breeze Hill Road. Her issues were inadequate parking on Breeze Hill Road and danger and congestion. And one last one. Frank, Frank, come and talk to us.
Hello, my name's Frank Pecorato and I live at 765 Las Palmas Drive. Lived there 26 years. We look right down at CVS, so I've been involved in this property for a long time, watching it develop. My wife's a school teacher at Breeze Hill Elementary School. First thing I want to just mention here, folks, when you look to buy property, it's location, location, location. My comments tonight on this project are six things. Traffic, 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 parking, parking, parking. And I do want to take a moment though and say something about what the developer said, a couple of things the developer said. Comment was, came into this project open-eyed, looking at all options. However, then mentioned that he did the same thing down in La Mesa. So I have a feeling this is a pattern. Find a project that's dilapidated in the back, I mean economically, tear it down, build apartments. I don't know if that's true. I mention that because the comments he made about the group that's here, mob mentality, I think was to sort of lower the thought that you should take this group seriously. Other thing too, he made a point that isn't it great that we have commercial and residential next to each other and somehow we'll work out a deal and everybody will agree that they can park in the parking lot at CVS and the bank and stuff. You know where that's headed. And I think that would have made sense because I came to this meeting 10 years ago, or 11 years ago, when they approved the master plan for all that property. And I'm talking about the plan for Avalon, where OG's is, where CVS is, and where these, these apartments are going to be built. The whole thing was a master plan brought into the city. And I remember the city council excited about it and they loved the developer who's no longer involved. That's how, that's how it works. The developer that made that plan and told them how we were going to build this project no longer involved. Now we have a new developer, right? And the thing is, the idea of mixed use makes sense. Wouldn't it be great if you had offices and people worked during the day and they parked there and other people were gone to work and then at night you sort of swapped? That's the idea, right? That's what Avalon was supposed to be. This is where I think the city's being played in these games by the developers. And I used to be in the development business, so I'm not an anti-developer. I'm not actually anti what they, what they want to propose. What I'm concerned about is the density, the parking, and the traffic. So here's the thing, if Avalon had not been built and the office buildings had been built, you would have had a perfect situation. The developer could come in and ask to build these apartments and make that claim. The problem is Avalon got in before he did. So now you have 200 and some apartments there, not two office buildings that people were going to come to during the day and use and then leave at night and on the weekends. An office building, by the way, is a great neighbor because nobody's there on the weekends. You have quiet neighbors, right? So the thing is, 10 years ago, the city of Vista was excited about what was going to be done on that property and now it's been swapped. So all I want to say here is, let's stop being taken for fools here and every 10 years, and don't forget what the developer is saying, trust us. CVS and the bank aren't going anywhere. Well, he said they're on a 20-year lease and they signed 10 years ago. You have 10 years left on that lease. The city doesn't get any promises. We have to just take their word for it. Five years from now, they move on and sell the property, you're dealing with a new developer that says, I had no knowledge of all this and we're right back to this game. And I want to say one last thing and I'll stop. This game is played all the time. Come in with 100 units, give up 10, say you did the city a fantastic thing. There are cars on those streets. If the developer doesn't think that there are more than two people in a bed and people own more than two cars, he's wrong. Could just go out on the street, you can show us all the studies you want, just go look at the streets around this complex. Traffic, 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 parking, parking, parking. That's my theme. Thank you very much.
That's the end of the speaker slips that I have. Our normal process is to turn back to the applicant to respond to the comments that have been made and then we'll proceed. Are the commissioners okay with that? Okay, all right. Mr. Gill, if you'd like to respond?
I stand by the information I shared with you. The only comment I, I choose to respond to is the one that has been raised a couple of times that I somehow engineered airbrushing cars out of the street. I personally stood in the middle of the street in the middle of the day, took the photos that we used to lay in the renderings myself. They were not tampered with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, we will, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to close the public hearing. No more comments and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners. So, public hearing is closed. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. Commissioner Bill?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for being an hour late. If I do that in court, I get tongue-lashed by the judges and often threatened with jail time, so I really apologize. It couldn't be helped and just so you know, there's still traffic on the 5. It hasn't changed. I am sorry that I missed the, the presentation on the code section because as an attorney, that was very interesting to me. And I just wanted to ask a couple of quick questions, almost yes or no, just to not put you out anymore there. But according to the code section, the proposed housing development has to comply with applicable objective, general plan, and zoning standards and criteria. And according to your report, it complies with those, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, the way I read it, when the project meets those criteria, it requires approval. But if a local agency disapproves, they have to base that decision on substantial evidence. And they define that substantial evidence as having a specific adverse impact, which in turn also means significant, quantifiable, direct, unavoidable. And those terms actually have to be based on objective, identifiable, written, several items including policies. So my reading of this is as an attorney. I hear the pleas, I hear the, the appeal from the developer on one side to build this business and which will become apartments from the citizens, from the city, from the businesses. And I appreciate the work that the city's done to actually go through in detail and lay out their terms. And the city's done their best to actually meet the criteria that are within the general plan, within the codes, within the guidelines, the number of units, the number of parking spaces. And the most the city can do often is say, here's the number that's on paper, does the number the developer's proposing match that? And we as commissioners have to look at that information and decide, does it fit? The city's telling us it's under 40, it requires under 40, therefore, we should approve it. Now, on the flip side of that, I think that the citizens of Vista and the attorney that they hired raised some really good points. And so I just want to make sure that the letter from Delano is on the record, is being put on the record, as is the, the list of the Lucy policies. So if I were to make a decision on this and I had to lay out what the specific adverse impact would be and base that on significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable, and within those four categories, objective, identified, written policies, I would submit these as the basis for my decision. And so with that, I would suggest to the other commissioners, I intend to vote against this in some way, based on those specific criteria. And I want to make sure that the citizens know, this is not an emotional decision. Unfortunately, we, we get to hear the hard times. We get to hear that you have cars parked in front of your houses and that things aren't working out well. We can't make a decision based just on those issues. But when you actually have specific lines from the code and from the general plan, this gives us some flexibility and some basis to actually make that call. So thank you for this. And to the developer, this is not, I know how much work you put into this. Months and years and revisions and time. So please don't take this in any way as a negative attack on your plan or your project. This is my reading of the code, my reading of the facts here, and this is the basis for my decision. And so I'm, I'm open to hearing other suggestions and other interpretations of that, but that's my take at this point.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you, Mr. Bell. You've said a lot that I absolutely agree with. Mr. Looney, I agree with you that there have been a lot of changes made, possibly for the better with this project since it started. It's still too much there. And I, I don't know if we can deny it or if I can suggest that we require a full EIR that takes into, for, for exactly the, the things that Mr. Pecorato was saying, the traffic, the, the parking. Did we do a, a traffic study that encompassed all the rest of the neighborhoods that were being impacted? Have we really looked at the parking that is impacting other neighborhoods? Does it truly, looking at the Lucy guidelines, does it truly meet the general plan? I'd really like to ask if we could require a full EIR or deny it.
Okay.
Are we going to get an answer to that? Or is that a...
The what? The question of whether...
Stephanie just asked a question about whether we can require a full EIR. Can we get an answer to that?
Well, I'll, I'll answer the question on the denial. The, the evidence and the information is before the, the commission. So if the commission concludes that it's compliant with the objective standards but that it exceeds a, an adverse, I mean produces a specific adverse impact based upon evidence before the commission and that that cannot be mitigated, the commission certainly would have the authority to deny on that basis. And ultimately, if it were reviewed and there was substantial evidence to support the commission, it ought to be upheld.
Thank you. I have a few other questions. This, this proposal calls for, this is for the developer, access gate to the park. It says proposed. Has that been approved or what would have to be done to approve that access through the fence to the park?
The school district was consulted and they've approved the concept of putting a gate in as long as it has a magnetic lock that will open during the regular park hours.
But doesn't that go to the city park and not to the school lot?
It goes to the city park, but the school district has rights over use of the park as well through an agreement that they currently have with the city.
But you can get into that park from Melrose?
Yes. The agreement from the district was only to allow access through the gate during the non-school hours. So that's what the condition that's in the packet states.
What about parking on those spots that are facing the baseball field? I would guess that the headlights from the cars could interfere with the, with the parking. Will there be some way to block the headlights from the ball fields?
So there is landscaping around the perimeter of the project, but the commission has the ability to condition additional landscaping to ensure that the lights are blocked.
That would be one of the things that I will definitely propose. The other thing is, or one of the other things, there is a proposal to put, if construction begins, to put walls on the north and south side, but not the west and the east side. And the same noise is going to happen whether it's east or west or north, north or south. Why is there not a noise wall on the east side?
The requirement for the noise wall was to mitigate the sensitive land uses adjacent to the project, which are residential to the north and a park to the south. Because there's commercial retail to the east, we didn't feel that there was a need for noise mitigation during construction.
Why? All those people visiting the bank and the CVS are going to hear that noise. And it's, it's going to get, according to the report there, up to 85, 90 dB, which is, could be harmful to people.
The intent was to mitigate places where people would be outside using the exterior of their property. So in a residential configuration or at the park, people would normally be outside. In a commercial district, most of the outside use is limited to parking your car and walking into the building.
And it doesn't take a lot of noise, or doesn't take a long time, hearing that kind of decibel level to harm somebody's hearing that's visiting the bank or the, or the CVS.
On that point, the staff recommendation was to only mitigate those sensitive areas, but the commission again could impose additional conditions to address that point, certainly.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
This is for staff. In public comment, it was brought up that variances were being requested for this project. Could you specify what is beyond the normal allowable guidelines?
Yes, there is one condition in our code that requires a minimum unit sizes be maintained for the size of the residential units proposed. And they provide numeric criteria for the size of each unit as a minimum unit size. Within this project, there are four of the 88 proposed units that don't meet the minimum unit size for a one-bedroom, which is 700 square feet. I think the minimum in this project is 625 for those four units. So the commission would have to accept that deviation or require the applicant to redesign the project to meet the minimum unit size.
And what's the building setback from Breeze Hill?
That's proposed?
Yes. No, currently from the application, it looks like it's 13 feet?
The minimum is 13, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garrison, I had you down again. Okay. All right. Any other comments? Okay. Commissioner Garrison?
Will there be onsite management and will there be a fee for parking?
These are questions better answered by the developer, I believe.
Could you please repeat the question?
Will there be onsite management and will there be a fee for parking for the residents?
There will be professional onsite management, which will do, as they've done on our other projects, a good job of managing the number of residents per unit. The, the management of allocated parking spaces will be marked and there will be no charge for parking.
For reference, page 235 of 329 has the conditions of approval, which does not allow charging additional fees for parking.
Commissioner Looney?
I have a question for Commissioner Bell. Could you summarize again what you had mentioned about the Lucy documents and the city guidelines?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bell?
Just to clarify, the basis of the decision that I'm tending toward right now would be several of the policy lines that were actually laid out by the advocacy group and summarized nicely here. Now, these are more general policies and these are not specific conditions. I think the, the easy route in this is to look at the numbers and see that they line up. And I have no question at all that the city has done their job and has looked through the actual, the parking, the actual number of units, the size of the buildings, the setbacks, and has been more than thorough in finding that those match the criteria. The problem I have specifically is with some of the general policies. Now, those general policies, they can, sometimes they can appear less than objective, but I think that you have to look at these and, and actually take these into account when making a decision like this. So specifically, the list on Breeze Hill Apartments, the document provided by Citizens for a Better Vista? Is that what it is?
Citizens for a Livable Community.
Citizens for a Livable Community. Thank you. The site and building design reflect the neighborhood characteristics, policy 2.2, policy 2.5, minimizing impacts on adjacent residential development that is of lower density. density. The, there was one on parking, and 3.4, require adequate off-street parking for all residential development. Now, we have codes and standards in place that more clearly define those policies. I understand that. But my issue is that there is evidence that's been presented in the slideshow and by testimony that those codes and policies don't always fit every neighborhood and don't always work. So my decision to actually vote against this in some form or other would be based on those criteria.
So how are those resolved? Or how are those defined?
Well, which way, defined or resolved? You're asking for more specifics on why I'm making that decision?
No, no, it's just, what's, who clarifies those points in comparison to the city regs?
We don't, I don't have that ability. There's no good answer to that.
Okay.
And my, I think that's where we lie as the City Planning Commission, is it's the city's job to go through and line up the actual definitions of the codes and line them up with the proposals from the builder. And then the gray areas, such as these, come to us. And so my call on this would be that I don't think this lines up. And that's based on photographs, based on testimony, things like that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
And then, can I just add something to that? The second half of the code section that I didn't address is, there's two requirements here. One, that if we're going to disapprove it, it can't, I have to show that it doesn't line up with the policies. And so I believe I've set the groundwork for that. And again, people are going to disagree. I may not be right, but then this is my judgment call on this. The second half of that is that there's no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the impact that I just identified in that first section, other than disapproval or approval and conditions. My take on that is disapproval, simply because there's so many variables here that I don't have the ability, and there's been several designer review processes, this has already gone through several forms. So my take on this is that disapproval is the option, that we can't go through and actually revise this. I'm absolutely opening, open to hearing alternatives to that. If someone has a way, and we've already heard some smaller pieces, but to address the actual issues that were shown on the slides and the testimony of the people that lines up within these policies, I would be open to hearing that.
Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. So I appreciate all the public testimony and, obviously, these traffic and parking issues are very serious to all these residences, as, or they wouldn't be out here spending their evenings, hours on end, time coordinating. So the evidence is the people putting in their time and giving these testimonies versus these reports. And this is real world, we see the real world more so in these testimonies than, and we do in a report done by a consultant that suggests something. But, so, I'm sidetracked, but that, I just wanted, I just want the public to know that the commissioners, you know, we live here too, and we do appreciate the time that you take out of your day to be here. But what I initially wanted to talk about was just the parking management plan, which comes, comes up on these multifamily projects. And Avalon does not have a parking management plan. Is that correct?
They do have a parking management.
They do? Okay. Well... Okay, so, so I have friends that live at Avalon that, that they, they don't park in their garage. And, and as, and they report as they drive up and down the driveways, the garages are open and, and they're just, they're not being used for cars. And so there's this thing out there that, that's always kind of bugged me a little bit, and it's this parking management plan that gets submitted and approved by, by the staff. And I don't really know what it, what it is. I don't really know what the teeth are in it. And there's some language in, on page 235, and it's under number 11, where it says parking spaces may be assigned to individual units or provided as open guest spaces. And then it goes on to talk about that we can't, can't charge, that they can't charge fees for that. But I would like to find a way, in this project and others, to, to come up with something more specific as a condition or recommendation regarding parking, along the lines of parking spaces shall be assigned to individual units and as open space, guest spaces, and then with further, further detail on a range of percentage of how many of those spaces are being conditioned to be assigned to the residents, and how many of those spaces are, are not, so that if there's some unknown enforcement mechanism, that it can be visually done, whether it's by a parking sticker, only a vehicle with a parking sticker can park in this numbered space. I don't know, I don't know what it is, but I'm looking for more, more detail and more, more ways to enforce these management plans. You know, I know the city's not in the business of being parking enforcing, but of enforcing parking, and I know if there's legal parking on the street, there's legal parking on the street. But I just want to find a way to head in that direction somehow, where, you know, we just say, we're going to do a parking management plan, and that takes care of any issues. And so they have five cars, that the person, people that live in that two-bedroom unit, they have four cars. And the parking management plan said that they could have two, but they're still parking four there, and there's nothing we can do about it. Project's, project's done. So that was my sidetrack issue about the parking management plan. It's not specific to this project. It's for all the multiple, multifamilies.
Commissioner Looney.
Well, along those same lines, I think we've got reality of how we all live, whether you're in Shadow Ridge, or whether you're off of Melrose, even in residential streets, you've got one single-family home, and you've got average three to four vehicles. And that's not counting a boat or an RV. And so they're going to be parking on the street. So we've got reality versus policy. So how do we blend those two together?
Come on.
City guidelines say that we have to do, that the developer coming in, I mean, when I do my work, that's the first place I go. I go to the county, or I go to the city. What are the guidelines? What can I build? What are my setbacks? What are the easements? The developer comes in, and staff, as they should, give them the policies and the guidelines to design by. But it doesn't work. And so as a commission, as a board of commission, planning commissioners, how do we respond to an applicant? How do we respond to a resident that's been there? And, like you, I don't know. What can we do? What's the answers to that? We can only say no, I think, so many times before we get into legal issues. At the same time, we've got months and months and months that I've heard residents that come and say, it doesn't work. We've got more people living in each living unit, and they're driving cars, and there's no place to park other than on the street. So I don't know the solution.
Commissioner Jackal.
Okay, so I've got this whole list of things about the project, but I don't think just the little nitty-gritties are going to solve the problem. And I don't know if I am permitted to move that we continue this project, or table it, or whatever we do, until the environmental, the full environmental review is done, that takes into consideration exactly the problems that we've been talking about. Can I move that?
You can move whatever you'd like to do. You're the commission. It's your decision this evening, so I'm not going to give you any different direction.
Can I address Commissioner Jackal's concern? To do an EIR, and you have to demonstrate there's a significant unavoidable impact.
We have done that.
I don't know that we have. The, the, the project is at less density, less units, more parking than our code requires. So I'm, I'm struggling with that. You know, how do we, how do we say no when they've done everything we've asked them to?
But, but the, the, if I, if I may...
Sure.
I don't think the, the guidelines and whatever sufficiently take into consideration the impacts beyond the exact location of the project.
Okay.
And that's what I think the EIR should study.
Okay.
Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm going to just take a little bit of a detour, again, off from what you started there, but it's, and it, and it goes to what I think, in my opinion, is the root of the problem with some of these projects, and that is the mixed-use zone. And, you know, we have this framework that is the general plan, and, and the project comes to us, and it meets all the requirement of that general plan and the zoning, and there you go. And so, so the issue is that people feel that the mixed-use zone and the parking that is tied to that mixed-use zone don't fit that neighborhood. And so, and that's, that's a subject for city council. There's nothing planning commission can do about that, other than give an opinion. And, and there's many things that we, we don't agree with on projects like this where it's, it's not our purview. And it's, you know, this, this idea that came up when the general plan was, was amended, adopted, is that we will have these areas, these underdeveloped or undeveloped areas that we would spur development, the city would spur development by adjusting the zoning. And that, in my opinion, was the genesis of this mixed-use zone, that affects a lot of the, a lot of the inlying areas. So, you know, based on a lot of public opinion that we've seen in a lot of these meetings, it's, looks like this mixed-used zone pendulum has swung to the edge. And, and it may be time for residents to start talking to city council about an adjustment to that, even though there was a general plan that was just recently adopted. But that's my side issue, again, not specific to this project. I'm sorry, but as these things, you know, come up time and time again, I'd like to voice an opinion on them.
Commissioner Garrison.
I would like to second Commissioner Jackal's motion.
Okay. Commissioner Looney, under discussion?
Just wanted to withdraw my request.
I'm sorry?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we have a motion to table the project and require that an environmental impact report be prepared on the, on the project. Including the surrounding neighborhood. And we have a second from Commissioner Garrison. Any other discussion? No? Okay. Call for the question. And let the record show that the motion passes with four votes yes, and Commissioner Carroll abstaining, and Commissioner Bill voting no. Okay. So that's the decision of the, of the planning commission, is that we are, are tabling the project until an environmental impact report on the project can be prepared. Okay? Given that, we're going to take at least a 10-minute break and come back for our other project. Do I respond to that? EIR's gets... Oh, yes. Okay. Well, thank you for your apology.
What's that?
The beaver's going to be closing.
Buy it at the store and put it in your refrigerator.
You had to know you weren't going to make that.
There was an article, there was an article that came out about peanut butter beards, and they, the beaver didn't get mentioned.
Have a good one.
They, they listed five, like five, they listed five in article, and they listed like five in article, and not one, and Belgian beaver was not included. So I wrote in the comments, you guys need to come to this to try Belgian beaver.
It's in San Diego. It was in San Diego.
It's a national project.
Oh, was it?
Oh, hey, Michael.
Advancing to the right.
We're going to go here to the right? Yeah, exactly. I'm going to start.
I'll, I'll try to go fast. I love to talk, but I...
Yeah, no problem.
If I just say, we're for sale, we've got plenty of parking and traffic section.
The next item on our agenda is early design review, P-16-0322. Mr. Wrestler, would you give us your report?
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the planning commission. The item before you tonight is an early design review for proposed Green Oak Villa condominium development. The application number is P-16-0322. Just a little overview of the EDR process. The early design review process provides the opportunity for the planning commission to provide an initial review of the proposal, as well as provide preliminary comments to the applicant within this form. The proposal has not been routed to city departments, and the city has not reviewed the proposal in terms of its meeting the commitments and requirements of the development code. The applicant is here to provide a formal PowerPoint presentation, as well as answer questions associated with the proposal. There'll be no formal vote or action tonight in regards to the EDR item. Staff has received a preliminary proposal for the development of 107 condominium units on approximately 7.65 acres. The site is located at the northeast corner of Sycamore Avenue and Green Oak Road. The site is currently vacant land. Here's an aerial of the site itself, again, 7.65 acres. There's four legal parcels within the site, and again, it's currently vacant land. The property north of the site is developed with an apartment complex, as well as, to the east is also developed with an apartment complex. To the west, across Sycamore Avenue, the properties are developed with single-family residences, as well as to the south is developed with the commercial retail shopping center. The general plan land use designation for the site is medium-high-density residential. That land use designation would allow up to 15 dwelling units per acre. The zoning for the property is RM15, which is multifamily residential. That zoning allows for up to a maximum of two stories and a density of 15 dwelling units per acre. The project would require approval of a site development plan, condominium housing permit, tentative subdivision map, secret review, as well as landscape review. The project includes 107 condominiums within 21 separate buildings. The density for the proposal is 14 dwelling units per acre. The project has been designed with a two-story walk-up type unit, which maintains a two-car garage. The height would be a maximum of 31 feet. The makeup of the development would be seven one-bedroom units, 39 two-bedroom units, as well as 61 three-bedroom units. The 7.65-acre site would be developed with 21 buildings, with a mixture of four to six condominiums per building. The facility has been designed to provide a total of 299 parking spaces, which exceeds the code requirement of 297 parking spaces. This project would be developed under the multifamily dwelling unit apartments, or, excuse me, parking standards, which would be 2.33 parking spaces for a one-bedroom unit, 2.5 parking spaces for a two-bedroom unit, and three parking spaces for a three-bedroom unit. In regards to site amenities, the project has been designed to accommodate a swimming pool, spa, community room, shade structures, as well as a tot lot. Architecturally, the project has been designed with a contemporary architectural theme. The condominiums would be two stories and maintain a combination parapet, as well as a gable roof style in regards to the roof elements. The stucco exterior would feature fiberboard siding, metal awnings, as well as balconies. All units would include sectional garage doors that would face the interior streets within the development. I do want to note that there's a minimal number, I think it's a total of seven units that would accommodate tandem parking spaces within the two-car garage. In regards to the size of the units, the development's proposing a unit range of 989-square-foot one-bedroom unit to a 1,574-square-foot three-bedroom unit. Again, each unit would accommodate a two-car garage. With that, staff is requesting the planning commission provide comments to the applicant related to the design of the project. At this time, the developing, development team is here to provide a formal presentation and answer questions, and staff is here to answer questions as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Let's move on to the applicant's presentation. Mr. Barone?
Yes, my name's John Barone, JJB Investments, 12707 High Bluff Drive. That's in the city of San Diego. And initially, we've been working on this about a year. I wanted to thank John Conley, Mike Wrestler, Patsy Chow for their patience and for many constructive comments over the year to get us to this point. And also, to thank members of the community group, Nikki Hobson, who was very generous in allowing us to her home, and we were able to make a presentation to them as well last Moving ahead, I wanted to take a quick look at the site again. You've seen what's surrounding the area. One of the notable constraints that we have on the site is that there's about 65 feet of fall across the site. In medium-density projects, typically you like to have maybe 2% fall across the site. So, that represented a development challenge, and we were looking for a solution there. Otherwise, there isn't approved project on the site from 2007. There were a variety of studies that were done and certified at that time. We've updated all of those studies, pretty much all of those since, so we probably have 20 or in excess of 20 studies that have been done on the property. There are no real formal constraints, level of service A on Sycamore. We meet the planning requirements as far as parking and so on and so forth. But I did want to say that part of our thinking in terms of finding a solution here was dealing with the amount of grade, or like, I like to tell our team, we're trying to hide basically a five-story office building here with the amount of grade that we're dealing with. The 2007 approved plan had 115 units, including 19 affordable units, and you can see there there was a three-story element. In addition, the project was very rectilinear. It marched down the hillside in four separate pads, and we were brought in to take really kind of a fresh look at this, and to see if there was another way to approach this site and another solution, since obviously, while approved in 2007, the project was not, has not been built. And one of our observations is that it was just very complicated. The three-story element, retaining walls within the buildings, a lot of grade movement within the site, and what the site was essentially doing was going vertical as opposed to horizontal. So, we felt that we would really want to simplify the site, reduce the density from 115 units to 107. By doing that, we eliminated the three-story element, the low and moderate income units, and the requirement for a density bonus, which was triggered by the three-story element. We expanded the rec areas. Fortunately, right by our entrance, I guess fortunately, we comply with the hydro mod stormwater detention requirements. It also serves as a green space for us. So, we get additional passive green space right at the entrance, which happens to be the low point of the project. Worked out very well for us visually, also allowed us to meet the ever-changing hydro mod stormwater requirements. We've improved, we feel, the pedestrian vehicular circulation in the project, and we also updated the previous architecture to something that's a more current architectural style. Trying to remember, we were market-driven, we looked at other projects, borrowed some of the elements of what we saw. We went back and forth with staff in terms of what their desires were, what they wanted to see, and as well, we considered who our buyer was, hopefully millennials up to the age of 35. So, all of those things were reflected in the buildings that you see. Here is the site plan, and again, you can see on the lower left-hand corner, the hydro mod area, which will serve as a green belt, passive recreation. There is a little triangular area in the lower right-hand corner, which will be effectively a dog run. And in addition, we have a full rec facility centrally located within the project. Instead of four step downs, you now see basically two pads, one to the right, one to the left, essentially splitting the property in half. Again, we've talked about the architecture here, Michael told you what we were doing. We tried to get some diversity in terms of the movement of the planes within the building, at the same time, using different materials, stucco, fiber cement, and so on and so forth. But, to contrast that, we brought in essentially earth tones, so that we toned down the look of the buildings, because this is basically an eclectic neighborhood. We didn't want to stand out and jump in there with bright white stucco and California tile. We wanted to have something that would be compatible both with the industrial uses, commercial uses in the neighborhood, and also present something that was fresh and clean, and would appeal to our potential target buyers. The price range here, well, I always hate to quote those, will be such that I think we will be competing with some of the older detached stock in the city of Vista. And so, our buyer, young couple, we think needs to be attracted by the appearance of this project. It needs to look fresh, it needs to look clean, and would be designed to appeal to that particular buyer. This is something hot off the press, we just did. Wanted to show you what the look would be of the project if you saw some pavement in there, green space, trees, and so forth. And you can see, going from three to two stories really reduces the impact of the buildings. So, with semi-mature trees, it presents, we think, a very attractive-looking project. So, again, here in summary, and running through this really quickly, but we have a park-like entrance. We were fortunate with the hydro mod location, that we could put in approximately an 8,000-square-foot green space at the entry. We have updated design in terms of the elevations of the buildings. We have a convenient and centrally-located rec area, but in addition, we're using the hydro mod space to the extent we can, at least for some passive uses, for some seating, and also some additional area for dog run. And I might mention that we meet or exceed the city standards, as you can see, for private, common, open space, landscaping, amenities, setbacks, building height, and parking. So, we feel we've kind of struck an optimal balance. One of the interesting questions we got was whether or not, what was going on? Why were we reducing density? And while there's some benefit to removing the requirement for a density bonus, also we felt we were striking an optimal point. It's not necessary, in our opinion, to build as many units as you can physically put on a site in order to really reach the optimal point, both for the community and for the market. So, with that, I'd like to conclude my remarks, and we'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. To the applicant, can you come back up, please? I've got a question.
Question. Stay close.
So, I noticed that the driveway on Sycamore, oh, okay, now I see it. It looked like it was getting more narrow, but that's because you have some parallel parking there along that drive, so...
I could mention something there, too. The Sycamore access is basically emergency only.
Okay.
We were asked by staff to have that as an emergency gated access, so our primary access is off Green Oak.
Okay, good. I see that gate. So, what, what are you thinking for the width of these drivelanes that access these buildings? The interior drives, not the main, not the main artery, if you will?
The, maybe Jim? We have our civil engineer here.
You have the actual alleys as opposed to the main?
Yes.
Thoroughfare?
Yeah.
24 feet.
Okay.
Designed to provide turnaround.
Garage face to garage face?
Yes.
And then...
One of the benefits we have here is that the exterior, the fronts of the buildings actually face out onto Sycamore, so the community view is sort of a rich elevation. But, you have to deal with cars. Everybody here gets a two-car garage. In addition, we have 0.8 parking for guests, so the overall ratio of 2.8, we think is pretty strong.
And so, I see it's, this whole interior loop is double, is parked on both sides, and then, so what's, what's the clear distance between cars through that loop? Is it eight plus 24 plus eight? Excuse me? Excuse me? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
66 is 12, and we have 36, Jim? So 24 clear? Yeah.
Okay. I got it now. I just, I couldn't hear you over there.
So I'm sorry, I got lost. How wide is the street?
Do we have, is that 36, Jim?
Just double check.
Yeah. We are getting dimensions as we speak.
Thank you. I couldn't find it on the plan. That's... Assign 8 feet of that.
I said 8, and then I'm assuming another 8 and 24 minimum.
Right. Right.
It's his project, it's not mine.
See, their cross-sections aren't the scale.
36 less 12, or 24 feet clear? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. 24 feet clear if you have cars parked on both sides.
Okay.
I might say, please don't quote me on this, but there are probably another 30 spaces down on Green Oak that could be used for parking if somebody chose to do it, but we're not suggesting that those spaces be used.
Yeah, no, I'm just...
I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that...
Looking for clarification. I saw a few 8-foot dimensions for the parallel parking, but these street sections don't have any dimensions on them.
The next version, I assure you, will.
Just to be clear, the requirement we have is 24 clear and 8-foot-wide spaces for parallel parking. So if they have 36, they would allow parking on one side, not on both.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Commissioner Garrison.
Tell me about the sidewalk or pedestrian circulation within the facility, within the footprint vis-à-vis the way the cars are going.
Okay, maybe JT, if you'd like to. We have our landscape architect here. He's also looked at the ADA compliance, and we were asked to enhance crosswalks. So there's a variety of things going on here, and especially dealing with the grades. So JT, why don't you offer some comment here as far as circulation?
Certainly. Good evening, or good night. My name's JT Barr. I'm a principal landscape architect with Schmidt Design Group. And first, I'll cover, so the primary vehicular circulation, as John mentioned. Our primary access will be off Green Oak's road, so we will have access into the project with the opportunity for residents to access each of the alleyways. But we primarily have a central spine with a series of alleyways that would feed each of the development footprints or pads, if you will. From a pedestrian circulation perspective, we have access off of Sycamore Road, which would lead all the way through the project. A majority of the project has non-contiguous sidewalks, so we would have clear ADA circulation throughout the project, all the way to our primary amenity spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
One other question. Have you looked at how far away it is to the closest recreation facility from this site? I mean, it's got to be 2 or 3, 4 miles to the closest school or park. It just seems to me that you need to really focus on amenities even more than you've done here because of that. There's, like the previous project we looked at, there was a city park right next door. There was a school right next door. Here, you're a long way from any of those.
Certainly. We'll certainly take that into advisement. The project as it's designed currently exceeds the usable open space requirement by over 10,000 square feet. So with the active-use amenity space that we have in the center, which includes a playground, pool, spa, community rec room, along with the more passive space on Green Oak Village, we're really trying to create as much and diverse amenity space as we can within the project.
It would have to be pretty independent, just simply because you're not going to be able to necessarily cross Sycamore, and Sycamore becomes very, very busy, obviously, from the Business Park over to 78. And I'm just concerned about the kids who are there having access to facilities safely.
Commissioner Looney.
You've got a tough lot.
Yes.
It's just a tough lot to deal with. You've got some 24-inch-high, or 24-foot-high retaining walls.
The high, I'm sorry, the highest should be at 13 feet.
Well, but you've got a 13-foot-high wall, then you've got 11-foot-high wall.
Right.
And they're 5 feet apart.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of wall. And that's why you've got a tough lot.
There was really, other than going to a very complex, costly, and frankly unbuiltable solution, in putting retaining walls in the buildings and stair-stepping down the hill, you're exactly right. And that was, when we were brought in to take a fresh look, there were, there was not a perfect way to develop this site. There had to be some trade-offs in order to get us there. We felt we met or exceeded essentially all of the city standards there, and we tried to separate the retaining walls where we could, put a bench in between, or somehow make that more gradual. There are also planting requirements over 5 feet for the retaining walls. We're going to be taking a whole look at that as we go. But at our first pass, we just tried to create a site that essentially, we could put a sufficient number of units on to make sense. And as an example, the fees alone here will be about $4 million, and in addition, we'll be improving portion of Sycamore frontage and also Green Oak. So there is just a lot of cost, even before you get to building the buildings, and a lot of cost in the retaining walls.
It's just hard to, and I understand, that's why, I know it's a tough lot, but when you've got 5 feet from face of wall to face of wall, you're going to end up with just a little over 4 feet. It's 2:1 slope. You're not going to get much landscaping on that. And then at that upper wall, where you've got a level backfill, you've got 10 feet from property line to face of wall, which is good.
Well, the other thing that happens is we've taken a couple of perspective looks, and we'll delve into that a little more deeply, as to what folks would actually see as they drive up Sycamore on the right-hand side of the road. And as the buildings are situated, for the most part, they obscure the walls. So you're not going to be driving by this project and seeing a whole bunch of walls. We're going to really work as hard as we can to soften that appearance.
For staff, is there another site location where we've got a 24-foot-high retaining wall? Well, I should, let me correct that. Where we've got two walls, 5 feet apart, that total 24 feet in height? Just so we can see what that looks like.
If you go down Business Park Drive past the Target, you'll see comparable-height retaining walls. But I think that's the only one that comes to mind that's a recent development that has walls that high because they had comparable grade issues.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Commissioner Jackal.
Can't tell you how it warms the cockles of my heart to hear you say you're not trying to cram as many living units on your property.
Thank you. And these are for-sale units. These are not apartments.
I understand.
Okay. Just to make that clear, for the record.
Overall, I like this a lot. I have a couple of questions. I like that you have broken it up into a number of buildings. So it's not these long alleyways of garage doors and that sort of thing. It makes it a more kind of community feeling. I like that the rear facades with the garage doors have articulation and different materials, so it's not just garage doors. Could I ask what material the perimeter privacy fence will be?
We've done an initial acoustic analysis. We're not going to be, a sound wall will not be required. We're thinking right now, we might do some sort of wrought iron, which would be maybe aluminum-based, black wrought iron, which would disappear with the landscaping along the Sycamore edge, as an example. So there would be some form of security fencing. We need to look at what material it will be. My tendency is to want to use a material that's as low maintenance as possible, and something that can be cleaned up if there is, heaven forbid, graffiti or other damage of any sort. And as well, we're going to be putting a strong edge of landscaping, say, along Sycamore. So we are looking at that, will probably be security fence.
Do all units have washers and dryers?
We have our architect here. Is it Brian? We have stackable or side-by-side? Combination, side-by-side, and stackable? Yes.
All right. I could see them in some units, but not others, so. I like all the trees that you show on the site, and I look forward to seeing your landscaping plan. I think I counted 5 ADA spaces. Is that right?
Yeah. Do we have a count on the ADA? Yeah. We know what that is offhand, I believe? Yeah, we don't, we don't know what that is. We're still in the process, because we have loading, we have ADA, we, certain number of things to work out. What our initial pass was, was to try to get the gross parking count really compliant with a city standard. And in order to do that, in some cases, we shifted two-bedroom to one-bedroom units, or three-bedroom to two-bedroom units. So we've downsized unit, bedroom count in order to make the parking standards work. It's pretty much, as you can imagine, a complicated iterative process. We're going back and forth. We've got to figure out exactly where all the trash enclosures go, and we'll be talking, and we have talked to Edco as an example, so there's just a lot of stuff yet to be done as far as refinement. But we think the basics are there in terms of the project.
Do you have, will this be a community, I know it's condominiums, but will they have CCNRs of any kind?
Yes. We'll have CCNRs, rules and regs. There will be an HOA.
Okay, and no storage in garages?
Exactly. No storage in garages.
Park your cars in the garage?
Yes. And we've been thinking about maybe restricting parking for residents in the guest spaces. There'll be a variety, you know, red curb opportunities. There'll be a variety of ways to manage that, and we'll put all that in place as far as when we come up with our formal submittal. We're hoping within 30 to 60 days, we'll be here to submit.
And finally, I appreciate the amenities that you've already outlined, but think of this as being a community that's an island, as Commissioner Garrettson has said. Those kids are going to have to go a long way in order to, you know, find places to play. So if there's a way to provide more play space, that would be great.
Well, we've been thinking totlot in the center.
Yeah.
And we're also working very hard. My challenge to our team was to take that 8,000-square-foot detention basin, which has a nice green surface, and find a way that we can use that and still be compliant with the hydro mod. So as you can see, there's a nice green space right there. Right now, we're looking at maybe a sidewalk and some benches, and, you know, things that would be, again, lower maintenance, but we're going to be exploring that further as well. I appreciate those comments, by the way.
Do remember the kids.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to talk a little bit more about the walls, whereas Commissioner Looney mentioned, you know, and you did as well, this, the site has a lot of fall. And I, I'm not opposed to these walls back here in this corner, just for the reason that it pushes the site down, it nestles it into the end somewhat, and it improves the, what the view would otherwise be from Sycamore of the site. And I think there's a, at first glance, there's a lot of variation in elevation of each of these buildings as they step in a lot of places that I think it would have been very easy to do much fewer, larger, you know, fewer buildings and making them much larger, and then having bigger walls, you know, a large wall in between a building and a, so I think it's been broken up pretty well for as much fall as there is on the site. So I like that, and, and we're not really following our early design review program.
You're supposed to be asking your questions.
But I will say that the architecture style, I like. I'm not afraid of a contemporary style like some people are, but so I think that looks fine.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Question for staff, and maybe for you as a developer. In January, we get a new building code, and it's even more restrictive than it is today, especially with all the stormwater stuff. What happens, really, a question to staff. When an applicant comes in with a preliminary site design, and we've got so much space dedicated for the bio-retention, and then a new code comes in that requires that to be increased 25%, and if staff, or if they've got approval from the planning commissioner, and then the site plan changes, what happens to the applicant's design? Because it's really kind of caught between old code that it was submitted under, and then new code requires site plan changes. What happens to the applicant and the application?
So we deal with that right now, because we have a number of projects that have been approved in the past few years that have not been built, and there's new stormwater requirements that are in place that now change the drainage requirements for those projects. They have to comply at the time that they get a grading permit. So basically, they have to go through a revision process with us at the staff level to meet the requirements in the code at the grading permit. And if the design changes so dramatically that it affects what the planning commission approved, then they may have to come back to the planning commission for review.
Okay.
That's the way we handle it. We call, we go through substantial conformance.
Okay.
I would mention that it's obviously very challenging for the applicant, because there's a moving target. Our civil engineer, Jim Kilgore, is busyly writing. He's also on the Building Industry Committee, working directly with Regional Water Quality Control Board. So we're kind of getting the freshest revisions in terms of requirements. To some extent, right now, we've over-construted to try to allow for what may happen in the future, and between the time we can actually lock in the regs. We'll also look at doing some applicable studies to really demonstrate that what we have on-site works. So we're hoping from a technical standpoint, we can also demonstrate that. But I really appreciate the question, because it is a challenge in essentially all areas, and this one has been maybe a little more murky than most.
And I'm glad there's people like you that deal with engineering, because they're a pain in the rear. I, the architecture is fun. It's lighthearted. It's, I mean, not lighthearted, but it's, there's some, it's got classy look. And again, as was brought up earlier, you have sculpted this tough piece of property to where it has really visual, a minimal visual impact on the street. So, but it's, it was a tough lot.
Yes, thanks. I appreciate your recognizing that, because it has taken us a year. And every time we push and pull one of those little retaining walls, we lose parking, as an example. So we're constantly in this state of iterating back and forth, but we chose to make the conscious decision to go horizontal with the site instead of going vertical and adding a three-story element. And that was probably the biggest change that we made from the existing project that is approved.
Commissioner Garrison.
Maybe this is a question for staff, but maybe for the applicant. That green area in the lower left-hand corner, can anything go there? Can a park? Can a basketball court? Can any of those things go there?
I can, I can offer what our discussion has been at the team level, which is that typically, anything that's a little harder, active use, would probably be prohibited, but more passive uses, walking, benches, and so on and so forth, would probably be allowed. We don't anticipate at this juncture, say, for instance, a soccer field out there. I would love to have one, just for the comments that have been made here already. So we're going to be exploring that in some detail, to look at the cost trade-offs and what may be allowable, because we have a beautiful surface area there to work with, and it's at least 8,000 square feet. So it'd be wonderful if we could incorporate the uses. And the cost, the incremental cost to us, is really minimal to put something really nice there, if we can get it as allowable.
It's possible.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can check with the regional board to see if they would go for pervious pavement there for a half-court. See what they would say.
We've talked about all kinds of crazy options over there.
I was just going to suggest to maybe have... To make sure that these tight radiuses work for the fire department and for trash truck access. Like, I can kind of picture that if both sides are loaded with cars in this drive, and if a fire truck or emergency vehicle needed to get down to the end of one of these alleys, it might be a little difficult. So, I would just check with that.
We've looked at the lengths so far, and we've looked at access so far from a fire protection standpoint. That seems to work, but I appreciate the comment.
Commissioner Bell?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for acknowledging that building the maximum amount does not always equal the best profit, and it's very welcome. I mean, genuinely, we don't get that often. And so, I'm familiar with the area from years ago, being involved in some projects there. And I like the design of the front of the buildings. It feels very small-city-like with the open walkways onto a green area, or I assume it'll be a walkway in the middle.
Yes.
Are there any difficulties with the roofing? It looks like you've got a couple of elevations, and this may be an architectural question, but it looks great on paper. When you start building this, do you guys have experience with the multi-style roofing here? Because it looks like you've got built-up in some areas, and then shingles or tiles in some areas, and then intersections. It's not even a question. I just wanted to point it out. Just make sure if you're going to present something like that, be ready to build it, because having some construction experience, those are the places where the attorneys come in later and pick apart.
You're exactly right. And water intrusion, as you know, is the number-one issue out there. We were in discussions with staff, and we were requested to have some variation. Originally, we were doing all slope roofs, and it did get a little boring, so we're trying to make it a little more interesting. But then that does present junctures, and issues where flat and sloped roofs intersect, and that's exactly where potentially there are issues. So, from a construction standpoint, Brian, I assume you've worked with that before?
Yeah. It does look good, though. I appreciate the design.
Thanks.
All right. I have a question for staff. The one-bedroom has tandem parking spaces in the garage.
So, this is an issue that's at the planning commission's discretion. We don't have a standard that says you cannot put tandem parking in, but if you don't want it, it's within your decision-making authority to tell them to do something different.
So, I have done it before. I've seen it done before in higher-density projects in a more urban setting. And so, I mean, whoever buys the unit, the one-bedroom unit, has got to think about who's going to be parking in the garage, and, you know, if they require... They make them park both vehicles in there, then that's an issue. So, I just raise that for the commission's consideration and thought. I like the fact that, well, we're getting into... I'm not asking questions anymore. Let me go back. The one retaining wall that I do have a concern about is at the edge of Building 14, between Building 14 and the rec area. According to grading plan, it's 12 feet high at the corner. And it runs down to, oh, it's 13 feet in the middle, and 10 feet as it moves to the top of the plan. So, I'm just a little concerned about... Initially, I was concerned about internal circulation. You've got... All of these units have one way in and one way out, basically, and that bothers me. I would have preferred to see an internal loop circulation, but I understand the topography. So, like the driveway between Buildings 13 and 14, I would have preferred to see that punched on out to the major street. Okay. Have you considered on the... What is that? Southeast part between Buildings 7 and Building 11? Any additional recreation uses? My thought was a small area for barbecue island, but it looks like each unit may have its own private porch. Can you tell me about that?
Yes. Each unit will have a patio that complies with the city's requirements. And in addition, if you look all the way down at the end, there's a little triangular green space.
Yeah.
And that's intended for a dog run at this point, but it does provide a little bit of relief to the project. And there is some green over on that side of the property as well.
Okay. Okay. Let me run through here real quick and make sure... On the retaining walls on the south, the 24-foot-high retaining wall, I just point out that the building height is 29 feet. So, for the most part, we'll probably be screening that set of walls. That was an initial concern of mine in looking at the plans.
And we want to take a close look at that. As I've said, we've done some rough sketches. We've looked at... If you look at what our elevations are along Sycamore, we were just discussing those recently, at the max point, we're about 10 feet above. For the most part, the buildings do a very good job of screening the walls, and by keeping them on the interior of the site, as we've done, you don't get the impression you're looking at a lot of retaining walls as you drive up the street.
Okay. Very good. We now move to a portion of the meeting where the commissioners take a look at the site plan, give you comments about what they like and don't like about the site plan, and then we'll move on to architecture. So, commissioners, things, site plan, landscaping. Okay. Okay. All right. For myself, on the site plan, the street going as it passes the recreation center is over 7 percent. Again, dealing with your grade, I would like to see at the two major intersections on that street that you have neck downs as traffic calming devices. I'd like to see that there's a well-defined pedestrian. You've done a good job. It can be a bit better. There's... I don't see any pedestrian access out to Green Oak, and I think that's necessary on both sides.
I wanted to make a very brief comment about that. You're right about the 7 percent fall, and what happens is it just gradually steepens as we get out to Green Oak. So, we were talking about, as a team, perhaps putting in some stairs, actually, literally down there. That generates a whole other set of requirements. Somewhere, the grade has to be taken up. So, the pedestrian access from Green Oak is a little more difficult. Another solution we talked about, which we don't want to do, is to try to put in some sort of a long switchback. It gets very, very costly and frankly infeasible for us to do.
All ADA requirements?
Just, yeah. Just physically, it's just very, very hard to put it in there.
So, just to comment on that, we do have a project in the north part of town that had a similar issue. They provided pedestrian access to the right-of-way, but also had a separate access that was not ADA-compliant, because it followed a sloping road up to the... So, that's a possibility.
Okay. All right. On-site manager?
This will be managed by an HOA. They'll have a professional management company.
Okay. All right. All right. Commissioners, anything on the architecture and floor plans?
I had one question on the site. And it kind of lays along the same line where if you have a stair that accesses a lower level, does code require that we do an ADA ramp that goes to the same direction? We've got a stair, for example, in between... You've got Buildings 12, 13, and 14. If I'm in... If I own a unit in Unit 12, and I want to go to the pool, is there a means by which to put a stair down that 13-foot wall to directly access that rec area? And if I do that, would code require a ramp? Because right now, I'm having to walk down the road... I'm having to walk almost twice the distance. Or even if I'm in Building 14, there's no direct access to get to that rec area.
Jitni, got a comment?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that.
Sure.
We would be required to provide equivalent access
Okay.
from point A to point B. If we're providing able-bodied access, we need to provide a commensurate ADA-accessible path of travel as well. So, what we've tried to do, given that we do have a lot of grade on the site, we have introduced ramps in a few areas to accomplish a complete network of ADA-compliant circulation throughout the project, is we've tried to create that as a high-quality experience as possible. So, all of our walkways along our central spine are non-contiguous, so we have a landscape buffer separating us from the roadway and from the parked cars. And all of our crosswalks are also enhanced as well. So, we're defining where that path of travel is through the site.
So, the path of travel, is that what's being indicated by a grade-out square line?
Yes.
So, I'm looking at the grading plan, but it comes along this path here?
Correct.
Okay. And it leads all the way down to here?
Correct.
So, that's what that...
That is correct.
Okay. There was no legend that told me what that was, but I was guessing.
We will note it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's our intention to develop a full-on landscape plan, and it's going to have all of the detail in these particular sections and so forth. This was a preliminary look at, obviously, but we just wanted to make sure that these pieces would fit. And then in certain places, identify where the constraints were left as far as grades go, and try to work around those as best we can. As for ADA access, there's a bus stop out on Sycamore, and for smart-growth purposes, it was important for us to access that. And that's... That ended up where we put the emphasis. Somebody could go out to Sycamore, take the sidewalk up to the bus stop, or down to the neighborhood center, as an example. So, we tried to flesh all of that out.
Any other comments, commissioners, on the architecture or the elevations, floor plans? Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
No. I appreciate the constructive feedback. We're in the process of putting together our formal submittal, so we'll be going around again. And I also would like to thank you for acknowledging the challenges that we face here. I've tried to explain it to the property owners, and I think they hear, and they kind of do, and they, you know, maybe don't want to. They own the property.
Yeah.
So, as we used to say in the building industry, once you buy it, you own it. And so, I mean, literally, that's what we're faced with, and we've tried to do the best job we could within the envelope of the city requirements and the constraints of the site.
Very good.
So, thanks for acknowledging that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there public comment on this project? I didn't have a speaker slip, so... I didn't have any speaker slips, so that's...
I think it's a great question.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Mr. Conley, the next item on the agenda is commissioners' staff discussion, council actions, and reports.
So, we will have a meeting on October 4th. We have two items scheduled. One is our parking code update, and one is a project, Vista Energy Storage off of Olive Avenue. We will also be discussing the mixed-use zone probably at the October 18th meeting. And I'm putting together a staff report to discuss the parameters of anticipated development within the zone and some of the remaining sites. So, we'll be able to have, hopefully, a fruitful discussion on that that'll go to the council following the commission.
Okay. I've got a whole bunch of questions here. Hang on. Commissioner Looney? You're done? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Garrison? Yes. I had talked to John a little earlier about this, but I'd like to see kind of a presentation that would show the public what access they have to information. For instance, we have a new software called Access Vista that I'd like to see us do a presentation. We have the big signs that we're putting on development now. We post these meetings. I mean, we hear all the time, "Well, I didn't know about it," and so forth. And I think we can just sit here and say, "Well, you had plenty of opportunity." Or we can take a proactive stance and say, "Let's show them again and again and again what easy access they have to information," whether it be the website, or as they drive by, seeing the signs. So, I'd like to see us do a presentation. You know, how often we do it, I don't know, but I think it would serve us well and serve the public well, just to reiterate that opportunity. Very good. Commissioner Bell?
I had the opportunity to talk to John and some of the city staff earlier this week, or last week, and I just wanted to raise a couple of issues. We don't have to vote or anything on this today, but I'd like to propose that the city's staff have the ability to limit the number of items on the agenda, especially if there's going to be a high-action item. I didn't get a lot of pushback from that. I'm guessing nobody really wants to be here till 10 or 11. And I joke about that, but it's also not fair to the public to have meetings so late that families can't stay and people can't stay late, and then our attention wanes. And luckily, these guys had a great presentation and worked together, but it's tough to keep paying attention four or five hours into it. So, maybe the thought is, let's think about... I don't know if we need to make a formal proposal or just request that the staff do their best, because obviously, you don't know either. You don't always know if there's going to be a large turnout or not, but that's just an issue we raised. And then the second one was, I think we do have the ability to actually put a cutoff time if we'd like. So, maybe one... Either tonight or at some point, we can move to have 10 o'clock be the drop-dead time where we actually cut things off, and we can also move to table an item until the next meeting if it comes to that. And I wouldn't do that to cut someone off who's prepared, but if it got late enough that people weren't paying attention and we couldn't actually do our jobs, I would suggest that we do that. So, I just wanted to point those out. I don't think we need to take action tonight, but think about those and decide if we want to raise that. Sounds like the next meeting or two are going to be a little more in the norm range.
Yeah, the 18th will probably be a long meeting, but the next meeting will be a short one. But we will have a few that go long, and, you know, I just want to remind the commissioners, you all have the opportunity to make a motion to table any project or, you know, continue to another date if it gets too late. The council has a policy that at 10:00 PM, they require a vote to continue any discussion, so you could consider something like that.
That's a good way to do it.
But it's at the commission's discretion, so if you want to maybe schedule a discussion on that at an upcoming meeting where we could come to a decision, or maybe you just want to provide direction tonight.
Real quick, I just wanted to thank the city and Mr. Stone for providing more information on the code. I think that as an attorney, it's really tough to get asked a question like that in the middle of a hotly debated topic and have to provide an answer that... No statute is interpreted in a black-and-white yes-or-no way, so thank you for following up on that. And I wasn't here for the earlier part. I apologize for missing that, but I do appreciate you providing more information. I think that helps the public, and that's very important. So, thank you for that.
Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. So, does the city ever get involved when a project is under construction and there's issues with the contractors or the developer and the neighbors during construction-type issues? I'm guessing you get calls for code enforcement or the counter with something going on, but...
All the time.
Okay. So, what... Do you try to help resolve or just try to stay out, or...
No, we have construction inspectors that are responsible for making sure that the contractors are adhering to the time limitations and the noise requirements, and so they keep an eye on that, and they try to resolve issues between the residents and the developers. It's pretty typical.
So, I have a friend that lives in the cul-de-sac where the Starbucks is being built, and I guess the contractor's wiped out their basketball hoop. And so, they're working on getting that resolved, but I'm not sure how much headway they're getting.
That's kind of a civil issue, you know, between the two owners, so we try to stay out of those. It's more... We typically more get involved when there's impacts to the right-of-way, or we know neighbors' rights are not being adhered to in accordance with the code.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah. Okay.
The city council discussed the planning commission appointment process?
They did. I should have reported on that. I apologize. Yes, they agreed that they're going to move the interview process back to a closed-room format, where the five council members will all participate in the interviews, and at the end of the interview process, they will collectively... And at the end of the interview process, they will collectively vote on who their recommendation is. That was the outcome.
Very good. Thank you. Any other issues, comments, concerns? Okay, then we stand adjourned.